Welcome back.
Hey, everybody. Thank you.
So, let's get underway. Welcome, everybody. Six thirty, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. And ask everybody to mute themselves and stand if they wish for the pledge of allegiance as I will recite it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I apologize in advance for my crackly voice. I am homesick, but virtual meetings to the rescue. So our first matter of business is citizens' comments. We don't have any this evening, so we're gonna move right on to the school committee chair update. So it is my pleasure to introduce to the committee and to the communities our newest member of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, and that is Amy Vessels from Bolton. Welcome, Amy.
Thanks for having me. I'm glad to be here.
So, as you all know, Mary McCarthy has retired from this round of her volunteering, although I'm sure she's gonna be back in some way, shape, or form. But Amy has taken on the responsibility of representing the town of Bolton. So Amy, do you wanna just say maybe one or two things about yourself, or just just say hello? It's up to you.
Yeah, I'm pretty new to Bolton. We moved here like right after the pandemic started in April of 2020. So I have a I'm enjoying living in the town, but I have definitely a lot more to learn about the town. And my kids are enjoying their time at the high school and at Florence Sawyer, so I look forward to working with you on school committee. Everything going on with the school committee, so it should be great.
Awesome. Thanks, Amy. Welcome. So happy you're here. So I know, I feel like Amy is being somewhat she's she's not giving you the whole story, but I will. So Amy and I have known each other for a long, long time, and we are both teachers at Hudson High School. And Amy and I like to joke that we are in the same pledge class. We entered at the same time. We were mentored at the same time. And and she and I have spent many fun times together in the education world, so I'm really happy to have you here, Amy. I think that you have a lot to offer the Nishoba Regional Schools, so I appreciate you being here and volunteering your time. So let's go over now to the school committee calendar, our meeting calendar. Does everybody have access to that, or maybe Alita, do you wanna share it for us? I can also do it if you want me to.
Sure, I'll pull it up.
Thanks. Before we put a motion on the floor, let's see, or excuse me. Yeah, before we put a motion on the floor, maybe we can just go around and see if everybody is cool with it, or if anybody has any questions. And when you ask those questions, just throw up that golden hand so I can see. Mike, is that a question? Anything that you noticed, or anything that you like or don't like? Alita graciously constructed this for us. Go ahead, Mike.
So now I do have a question. I'm just assuming that the summer workshop date had just hasn't been set, and that's why it's not on there.
Correct.
So can we approve it without that date set?
We can amend it to include the date if you guys wanna do it or set that up now. Kirk, do you have a preference on our retreat date?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I hadn't put my mind to it. It looks like our first meeting is gonna be the fourteenth, and if I recall, we did our retreat last summer, the week before school began on a Thursday. If we kept that same pattern, the retreat would be August twenty fifth.
Correct. Alita, do you think that there, do you, because I know that you normally get the venue for us, do you think that there's anything wrong with that day?
Um, no, they don't usually have anything. If you decide to go to Cyprian, they usually don't have any, anything going on in the evenings there, so that's usually not a problem. I can check with Cyprian first thing tomorrow, or Friday, I'm not in tomorrow, but I can check with them first thing Friday. I'm sure it won't be a problem. Because you'll probably be down in the music room, too. Unless it, which I was also gonna mention, if Steve wants to attend, I know that mobility will be a problem, so we could have it. I could ask Dave to put it in the back of the ballroom so that there's a bathroom right on that floor, and he can enter the room with no stairs.
Great.
So we can, you can talk about that and let me know what you wanna do.
Great. Yeah, we'll talk about virtual options as well for the hybrid model, perhaps. Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks. Is there, I noticed that subcommittee meetings are noted in the corner, but I don't see communication on there. Is that is there a reason for that, or is it just an oversight?
Alita?
Um, well, we didn't, we, actually, we didn't really follow any of these, because this has just been copied from years and years, and it's usually because you guys set your meetings, one meeting at a time. Unless you wanna give me a calendar for the whole year, I can put it on here, but you can't really put it on here.
I just, I just mean, there's like a note that says, policy subcommittee and budget and warrant subcommittee meet as needed. Personnel Subcommittee meets at five unless otherwise noted on the agenda.
If I
Yeah, I can just, I can just take all those out, and I can just yeah, put down in the paragraphs down below saying subcommittees meet, you know, as needed, please check the website for the agendas, and I can just list all the subcommittees.
That sounds like a good
And I can then, I can just put a link right to the school committee page where they would check.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks.
So I think, Amy, the reason for that is because communication is relatively new, and it is perhaps not made the calendar, but I wonder if there's value in us establishing our subcommittee dates in advance, because that's been the practice historically. And it gives the community's member an opportunity to kind of book that sort of thing in advance. Nobody's ever attended a subcommittee meeting, I don't think, maybe budget and warrant here and there, but
Well, if, may I speak, Leah?
Go ahead, yeah.
Maybe the reason why people don't attend them is because they don't actually know when they are, so I'm in favor of trying to establish some kind of regular thing, you know, meeting schedule, but the challenge isn't the challenge that we don't know who's gonna be on the subcommittees for next year.
Yeah, so, Alita, just last year for personnel, because Mary was so super organized in doing this, we submitted all of our dates to Alita, like, early September. And she would add them to this, she added them to the calendar after the fact.
Yeah, what you, what you can do is, as soon as the chair established the subcommittees at their first meeting, they can distinct, they can establish the dates, and I can add them all on there after that. Because it doesn't really have to be revoted, because it's not changing the substance of the the days. I'll just add all the additional days on there.
Sure, that sounds great. Thank you.
I see Joe's hand first, and then Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is not anything that I think that is worthy of significant discussion this evening, but when Mr. Horace was talking about the summer retreat, it sort of piqued my curiosity about a practice of this district that I've always found to be a bit curious. And when we had the visioning sessions for the building committee, we did that at the Wedgewood Pines Country Club in Stowe. And the reason I bring that up is, is because the Wedgewood Pines Country Club is in the district. Now, perhaps this is a throwback to my latter, my earlier years, where, you know, in the eastern portion of the state, politics tends to be a lot less kinder and gentler. But, you know, there's always this notion that, you know, if we have business that we're going to be doing, it's always best to do it within the district. So perhaps something for the future, maybe not this year, but maybe next year or the year after, that, you know, we might wanna consider when it comes to doing business with local venues for our retreats, that we might wanna consider keeping that business and those funds that we expend in the district.
Alita?
Actually, we are, we are having our admin retreat, our two-day admin retreat there, and I did talk to Bob about the school committee. He wasn't overly interested in doing a room, doing a venue for twelve people.
But well noted, Joe. We should consider that moving forward.
Yeah, some just for the future. Think about that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Karen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can we just return to the subcommittee meetings for a minute? So, Alita, you said if everybody, once the committees are established, the chairs can send you meeting dates, and did you say you would add them to the calendar?
Think so, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'm only speaking for myself, but I will say that for me, it's really hard to schedule them all in September, because I don't know what January is going to look like in September. So is it possible to have some of them? Because I know we list them, we post everything at least two days ahead of time on the website, and I don't want us to be inconsistent with some versus others, but I just know for me that would be a challenge.
Yeah, well said. I think we could hit a happy medium where if your subcommittee or any subcommittee wanted to just go kind of season by season, they could maybe do that, just to give a little bit of notice.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine. Okay, so the only thing that I saw on the calendar that I wanted to point out, I'm raising my golden hand here, is you guys can probably see that this past year, we only had one meeting in February and April, and that didn't really serve us very well, because we had some some busy business time during that time. This coming year, that is not going to be the case, just because of the way that the weeks fall, which is good, I think. But that then gives us a one-meeting month in November and a two-meeting month in December. And I wonder if you guys would rather do November ninth and thirtieth, and then just December fourteenth, considering the chaos of the holidays?
Ace, come here.
Rich, I saw thumbs up. Anybody else? You guys just wanna go thumbs up if you're feeling like you're middle of the road, Mike?
Can you say those dates again, Leah?
Yeah, absolutely. So in November, it's a one-meeting month, which I'm not sure if that's a good idea. I'm just trying to think of the business of the district with the budget stuff and everything like that. I wonder if we should make it November ninth and thirtieth, and then just go one meeting in December, December fourteenth. And if I'm splitting hairs, you can tell me to knock it off, but yeah, give me a thumbs up with your golden thumb if you think that that change serves us better. I'm seeing one, two. Everybody okay with that? Amy, what do you think? Amy, see? Member Cohen. Brett's cool.
Yeah, I had my thumb up, and then it disappeared. Sorry.
There it is. Yeah, it doesn't last. All right, so Alita, could you make that change for us? And we'll just kind of keep our eyes open, and if we have to add a second meeting in December, I mean, we could always do that, but hopefully that won't happen. Rich?
That sounds smart to me. One thing I was gonna suggest, and I don't wanna digress too much into this, maybe we could have a formal or informal policy of always scheduling meetings thirty days out, if that's possible. Like, if that's a happy medium between the way Karen operates, I certainly don't wanna tell her how to operate her committee. But, you know, we do have members that join Budget and Warrant frequently, and I don't think we give them enough notice. Or, you know, or we don't meet on like a regular date. So I mean, maybe this is specific to my board, but I was just thinking, you know, if I wanted to, I think we do it like the building committees, or the school building committee, you know, does a good job of publicizing their meetings ahead of time. I don't know. It's just a thought. Maybe it's just something I'm probably gonna do myself, but it might be something
I think, I think that we've all said that that's a great idea, but could you maybe be the keeper of that? And when we do the protocol conversation at our retreat, maybe we could put it there?
Yeah, okay. I just think it'd be good, like, so one thing we should sort out is just, you know, when do the select boards meet, and then, you know, when do you know, when do the, and when do the FINCOMs meet? And just try to not schedule it, if we can, the same week or something, so people don't get meeting overload and and they can attend. So, makes sense.
Any other discussion on this calendar item?
I have one more question.
Oh, go ahead, Amy.
Does that mean that we don't have any meetings in June twenty-three?
On June twenty-third?
No, no, like, I don't see June two thousand twenty-three on this calendar.
So, I think that that we just don't know yet.
That's because your committee reorganizes after elections, and so your committee year begins with the iteration of new members. So the, the, the calendar won't begin for next year until June first of twenty-two, after Stowe is done with their elections.
Okay.
Yeah, so our reorganization is actually gonna, Stowe's elections are just weirdly late this year, so we're gonna reorganize the school committee and do like the chair election and all, and the subcommittee stuff at the next meeting.
So we have three meetings this June?
We do, and that's something that I'm gonna explain to you guys in a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Mike, did you have a question?
No, it was actually about the voting for, you know, positions on the new committee, so we're good.
Okay. Any other discussion on the calendar? Are you guys hearing me okay tonight? Okay. Mike, would you be able to craft a motion to accept this calendar with our advice to Alita? As discussed?
Need some help with that, Mike?
No, I just had to go back and unmute. It's terribly clumsy. Yeah, actually, I would. So I mean, I can, I can move to approve with amendments as per our discussion, but that seems kind of kludgy, too.
So the, so the motion to be moved to approve the school committee calendar twenty-twenty-three, adding November thirtieth, and having one meeting in December the fourteenth, and the summer workshop would be August twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Yeah.
I think Rich.
Who committee member have to make the motion, though?
I think Rich just did.
I guess Rich so moved. Okay, my bad.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Mike.
No, I don't care. No thunder.
I'm gonna second that. Any further discussion? All right, we're gonna take the roll. Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Myself. Yes, Amy Vessels?
Here.
You say yes or no, Amy?
Oh, sorry. I'll get there. Sorry. Yes.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Amy? OG Amy.
Was that original or something?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Here and yes.
All right, Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
And I think I got everybody. Okay, cool. So we have our calendar. Thanks, Alita, for helping us through that. Okay, um, so, get my agenda here. Our next item on the agenda is school committee goals update, or goals check-in. So at the end of every year, we kind of report out how we did with our goals, the goals that the school committee set. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share my screen and get us to the goals. Can you guys all see that spreadsheet? Did I properly share? Mike, I think, Mike, Sharon, and Amy Cohen, I can only see you guys.
Yes.
Everybody can see it? Okay. So, um, as you guys know, there are five school committee goals. There was one for policy. There was one for personnel. There was one for budget. There was, well, there are multiple for each one, but then communications subcommittee had some, and then I was in charge of doing a couple of things as well. So the proposed goal is here, and actually, maybe it would be helpful if I just put the spreadsheet in the chat, if that helps you more than just looking at it on the screen. This is something that's been shared with you guys a bunch of times. But you guys know that we put our proposed goals in, then we did our mid-year progress check, right? All of this is required by Mass General Law. The school committees do this. And, and by our policies. And now we are gonna do the end of the year check. Okay? And I'm just gonna say one more time, Sharon, Mike, and Amy are the only three I can see right now. So, Mike, if people are raising their hands, could you please interrupt me and help call on them? So the chair was responsible for, the proposed goal was to bring about three trainings, three different kinds of trainings for the committee. And what I have here is our end of year, or my end of year kind of wrap-up, is that trainings two and three that were focused on budget and superintendent evaluation, all of that was organized and conducted, bringing in Dorothy Presser, et cetera, and others. And then Training One was about the purview of the school committee, and Dorothy informed me early on that she thought that that was best done at our workshop in August. And so I look forward to bringing that to you then. So I'm gonna go to communication next, if that's okay. So Amy, can you just give us a very quick reflection on how you guys did?
Sure. We presented the results of the survey that we sent out in March, I believe, and with that survey, we identified recommendations for the school committee and the superintendent to consider. The recommendations that we've given to the superintendent are being discussed at the strategic planning workshops that are being held. And in terms of we had identified a few different action steps that we wanted to take throughout the year. And we're we are gonna be working on the last action step, which is to bring recommendations on communication best practices to the full school committee at our last meeting, which is in June. And then we'd like to be able to present those to the school committee at that time. Just to kind of summarize our work for this year. So the other action items that we put into our goals kind of ended up being recommendations that came out of our survey. And I see Mike's hand up, so, Mike, I'm gonna let you looks like you might wanna add on to this.
Yeah, I just, I think we'd be remiss if we were to not identify the fact that a good chunk of our, the first half of the year was actually crafting that survey with the superintendent. That was, that was a major that was a major step for the subcommittee this year. I mean, obviously, we presented the results, but we also crafted it with the, with the assistance of the superintendent.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mention that because I think we discussed that at our mid-year progress check, but that is true.
Awesome.
Darren, do you have anything you wanna add to that summary?
I think you covered it.
Okay, then we are, that's it. Thanks.
All right, let's go over to budget and warrant. So I know that Steve is our chair. He couldn't be with us tonight. So, Mike, or I guess Rich, or Brett, would you, would anybody feel comfortable talking about your end of year?
Sure, I'm secretary, so I could speak to it. So the first goal is to work with superintendent to create and present a detailed NRSD budget narrative that link it to the district improvement plan and identifiable NRSD goals. I think, I think we've accomplished that. I think Kirk is still working on those. You know, he's gotten up very, very fast on the the budget details and did an excellent job communicating to the stakeholders what's going on, so I would say that we that we've done that. I think it's an iterative process. I'm sure he's got things that he would improve, too, so I can share more. We talked about the budget process in our meeting last Monday, so we can talk about that. I think evidence of that was in the town votes, at least in Stowe, there was, is overwhelmingly passed, and there was very little debate, which to me says the questions were mostly answered, which is what you want. When people go to town meeting, you don't, usually there's debate and agita when people don't understand how big the breadbox is and all the issues and have sorted through those, and so to me, that's a big feather in Kirk's cap for this year. I think he reduced everybody's anxiety. What was the next goal there?
Writing proactive invitations to member towns finance advisory committee.
Yep, thank you. So I think we've done a pretty good job of that. I, you know, I sort of alluded in my comments earlier about scheduling meetings thirty days out. I think, I think we're okay on that. I think we could do a better job of just having standing meeting times. I think, I think members would appreciate that, too. I think in particular, Mr. Horace, you know, so we know when the meetings are thirty days in advance, so I think we certainly had a lot of participation. I think we could just be more programmatic. And by participation, I mean, we had lots of people from different stakeholders coming, and and a direct quote that I often refer to was, I've learned more in the last forty-five minutes than I've learned in the last five, seven years, right? When Kirk was giving some of his, his overviews and stuff like that. So I mean, I think it really earned the credibility, and certainly certainly for me, and I just heard it from a lot of different members, not just school committee members. Mike, give anything to add to that?
No, I would just add that, you know, as time went on, we heard more and more of those same that same positive feedback from those who were invited and those who just dropped in, you know, being appreciative of the openness and the transparency. So I just think it speaks to the degree to which we've worked towards trying to meet that goal.
Great, and how about the last goal? Can't see it.
The last goal is engaging with the superintendent and other relative, relevant administrators to develop a long-term strategic plan regarding OPEB liability.
So I would say we're just starting that process. It's a slow burn for really every municipality, whether it be Stowe or Bolton's government, or Lancaster's government, or the regional school district, or frankly, whatever, every organization has the same issue. It was interesting for me to see at our town meeting, Minuteman proposed their plan. And I know from talking with the superintendent recently that he wants us to be a focus, too. So I think to me, we've, I think we're starting the process, and to me, that seems appropriate where we are. I don't, I don't, maybe this was a little bit ambitious, perhaps. I know there's members on this committee that are still ramping up on what OPEB means, and God, it's a big number, and it jumps by tens of millions, you know, year over year. Why is that? Up and down. And so there's, you know, I think this is a focus. A couple of members on the committee are gonna be meeting with the actuary about OPEB to ramp up on on their fluency with it. And we need to make a so I think this, this is gonna be a goal that will carry forward. So
Right.
I get, I give us a needs progress in that one, but it's not like we ignored it. It's just there's more pressing stuff. Thanks.
Got it. Thanks, Rich. So guys, the next one is the Personnel Subcommittee. So the Personnel, sorry. The Personnel Subcommittee was interested in providing training for the committee on superintendent evaluation, and at the mid-year progress check, we had, at that point, I think, created or conducted two of the trainings. Let me just see. Yep. Yep, um, so for the end of year check, we have, we completed the training cycle with the committee. And conducted an exit survey that can inform next year's business. Um, we also, I will say, we did an analysis of admin salaries. As is required each year, um, so that is something that we conducted and brought to the committee and voted upon. That's it. Um, our last will be policy, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Karen. Karen, what do you think?
Okay, so uh, we, our goals were to review and revise policies for up-to-date alignment with Mass General Law and DOE goals and standards to reflect the Neshoba communities and our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, so in terms of our action steps, we have reviewed several policies. Um, fiscal residency policy and most recently um harassment, which we will come back to in June and be presenting to the committee as a whole. Um, and then in terms of Dear J's involvement, Leah, you met with Dear J to discuss this. They were not quite ready to take on, I think, reviewing policies yet as they're still sort of getting themselves settled and organized. Um, but they did, um, they were very focused on the calendar recommendations which they have made. And it's, we are hoping that they will um be ready to uh collaborate on the policy manual moving forward. I don't think Sean is here, right? Okay, so Leah, anything you wanted to add?
Um, the only thing that I would say is that I know that this is gonna be kind of part of the strategic planning going forward. I think every district is focusing on this and rightfully so. And so, um, you know, maintaining focus on our school policies in that they are in line with um, our statements of acceptance and belonging is gonna be really important next year. And so as Dear J is like really ramping up under the guidance of Lori Burnett and others, I think that they're gonna be better poised to assist with that work, um, if not lead it. Uh, Amy, go ahead, Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something because as we were going through the goals, it occurred to me that one of the communication best practices that our subcommittee discussed um, made sense to bring up right now because we thought that um we, you know, I personally, I really thought this was a great process to go through of setting goals, checking in with them and providing progress towards the goals. And it helped my subcommittee kind of figure out how to use our time to, and feel like we've achieved something. But, you know, we, we, I think we all set ambitious goals and there's um still work to be done. So one of the ideas we came up with was coming up with subcommittee parking lots as a way to transfer knowledge from one, one membership of a subcommittee to the next. And um, you know, we're gonna talk about this more in our next June, in our, our next meeting in June. But um, I just wanted to bring it up now because I think it's pretty relevant to doing an end of year check. Um, I don't know if you wanna, if we should use this spreadsheet to just have one more column that's like a parking lot. So that when some committees form next year, they can kind of look at the work that was intended to be done, where it got to. And then decide whether they want to pick it back up or, or at least know what, what, there's some record of what was done.
Yeah, that's really interesting. Um, I think that what you're saying is, it's not like meeting to meeting parking lots. Like our planning calendar has a parking lot where it's like, oh yeah, we gotta do this at some point. Let's put it on the parking lot so that we don't forget about it. Or are you talking about like at the end of the year, here's a list of things that we didn't quite yet accomplish? And we're hoping the next leaders of this committee will pick it back up.
Yeah.
The second ladder. Yeah, that's a great idea. So Amy, I'm gonna make you the keeper of this idea. And when we go to um redo our goal setting at the retreat, maybe you could encourage us to add that column?
Sure, and I've gotta give credit to Sharon because I think she's the one that, that suggested it. And um, and so it was a great idea. Thank you, Sharon.
Awesome. Okay. Great, so um Alita, I think that you might be able to grab that link from the chat and maybe add it to the meeting materials if you don't mind. And if you um struggle to find it, just let me know, I'll send it to you. Sorry. Alright guys, so um our next matter on the agenda is the consent agenda. And Mike, I'm gonna throw it to you, maybe you have a motion for us?
Sure, I'll move to approve the consent agenda of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, containing the meeting minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty-two and the warrants of May twentieth, two thousand two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any discussion?
Well done putting this together every week.
Alright, so let's take the vote. Uh, Rich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy Vassels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Alright, I think that's everybody. Thank you. Uh, moving on to our next matter, we have the superintendent's update. All yours, Kirk.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Um, it's at this time, I want to introduce to you a couple of uh special people here. Uh, Rebecca Solomon and Drew Bruton are in the room with us. Good, Rebecca, Becca and Drew, can you say hello to the committee and that'll bring your, your pictures forward?
Hi.
Rebecca.
There's Becca, hi Becca. And Drew, I think we, we see you, but your camera seems to be off. So, um, if, if Drew may be stepping out for just a moment. But um, I just wanted to share with the committee, I, hi Drew, good to see you again. I, I, I wanted to share with the committee and with our public that I, I had just an amazing opportunity to get the, to know these two young people, these scholars at uh Neshoba Regional High School that are gonna be going off to college next year. And uh, they represented us at the Worcester County Superintendent's Scholar Luncheon as our co-valedictorians uh for Neshoba Regional High School this year. And uh, we had a great day. Uh, uh, Ms. Boulay joined us as we went to the luncheon on that particular day. Uh, so we got to know each other a little bit on the ride down and the ride back, and I know they have some exciting futures. Um, in your packets, there's a link to some of uh their accomplishments. And these accomplishments were drawn out by some advisors as well of a, of, as a couple of different things. So they're not in any way to compare to each other, it's just some features of some of their work. And so you can read those there. Um, but you, as you can see uh with Drew, uh, he's taken a whole host of AP classes, receiving five in all those courses uh on his exams and A's in all those courses. He's been involved in Boy Scouts and Patrol Leader during his senior year. This, this was fascinating, man, the room loved this. Uh, that uh, uh, he broke a official Guinness World Record by traveling to every train station in Boston in record time. So congratulations Drew for finding that incredibly important uh record. I'm, I'm glad to see with the, that uh, we share that with you here in Neshoba. Um, and uh, his, his favorite quote that he noted here uh is that success is not final. Failure is not fatal, it is the courage to continue that counts by Winston Churchill. So congratulations Drew, um, on, on really a great um, uh, opportunity you have in front of you and, and what you've done this year. And next is Becca. Um, and uh, Becca has had an equally impressive experience uh here in the Neshoba school system. I, I have to say, these are both students from Stowe, they were very proud to tell me that uh for our Stowe representatives. Uh, that um, uh, and, and um, so looking at uh freshman honors physics, she had that year-end award for the highest grade, the Yale Book Award. Um, she, I know from our conversations, is very interested in fashion and design. And uh, Becca, if I remember, you're gonna be going to NYU next year. Um, as, as you work on um, uh, the things that you want to do. She collected over fifty prom dresses to give away in order to promote sustainability and spread the joy of fashion. And, and Becca, I also think that that is just, it's a very generous and empathetic uh gesture to also make. Uh, because it, it put dresses in the hands of young people uh, uh, who need that opportunity. So I commend you for, for making that contribution to our community. Um, and her favorite quote is, life when in uh, when it was good was indeed pink. La Vie en Rose, Lydia Michaels. So I think that quote really reflects uh Becca's spirit as well. Uh, but uh, I would like to, to have the committee join me in offering our congratulations for all your hard work um here in Neshoba. So congratulations to the both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And, and thank you for, for accepting the invitation to join us tonight. But we won't put you guys through the torture of, of the next couple of hours of our school committee meetings as we go through uh the regular business. So uh, thank you for coming, guys. Have a good night and I will see you at graduation here in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Becca and Drew. Congrats.
Congrats, you too.
Great, that was a lot of fun. Um, and, and we did, we had such a fabulous day. Uh, the next uh element of the superintendent's report is a, is a health update. And you can see the text there, what I want to share with the committee in our community is that uh, we all recognize that uh, there has been an increase in cases over the most recent weeks. It is reflective of the greater community, the Commonwealth as well as areas of our country. And um, we have been in consultation with our Neshoba Boards of Health who are reaching out directly to each town's Board of Health on the conditions of their town. Along with Dr. Coleman, we continue to receive messages of uh what we're experiencing in our community is simply typical of what is happening in all of the communities around us. And that the uh steps we've put into play with comprehensive testing, um, both through that home antigen kits and the um, uh, test, uh, excuse me, the, the weekly COVID safety checks are, are thorough ways to ensure that identifying the cases so that people can then quarantine to help. That is really the most effective tool that we have and uh, we're doing it well. I, I will tell the committee, it was very interesting to note, uh, if you recall, uh, the high school testing had gotten as low as twenty-eight volunteers uh would come forward to do their tests in a week. Since then, I talked to, to Nurse Go Bicki um, last week. Uh, when we said, look, uh, we're not gonna do the weekly COVID safety checks, but we'll make a second antigen at-home kit available to you. Uh, we were getting numbers higher than we ever did with the weekly COVID checks and getting two hundred and fifty to three hundred students arrive to get a second at-home testing kit to monitor themselves. So it was one of those unintentional steps that actually proved really even more beneficial for our high school because they were able to be uh, uh, tested more often. So we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, we encourage people to continue to make the choices based upon their medical histories, um, their vaccination status, uh, their past infection status on uh, uh, masking and, and the issues that they feel comfortable with in terms of, of uh, how we continue to mitigate uh this issue through, through the current health conditions. Um, but I know Nurse Go Bookie is, is here tonight. She has been in conversation with the Boards of Health, she's been in conversations with Dr. Coleman. And we will continue to monitor and work with them uh on a regular basis throughout each week uh, to ensure that, that we're in lockstep with what public policy uh is dictating at the time. I'm gonna pause right there, um, before I move into the ABC update. Um, so that I could excuse Nurse Gil Bicki in, in the um, chance that somebody might have a question on the health update. Okay, seeing none, Nurse Gil Bicki, thank you for coming tonight. And uh, uh, thank you for all your hard work and the work of our team as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, the next piece, uh, Assabut Valley Collaborative Update. Uh, there is a piece to this, um, uh, that uh, I'm gonna ask the committee to take a vote. Uh, ABC is our collaborative and they have some specialized programming for intense special need students of which we have a couple of students in the show bed that, that participate in that, in that program. There's also some cost sharing and transportation uh and in um, programming as is in a collaborative. You can track with the other towns together to form these collaboratives to cost share. Um, their studio in uh, excuse me, their, their uh, uh, school and their office suites are located uh in Marlborough on Lord Road. It just so happened to be the very office where the Mespa headquarters were when I was president. And we sold those uh facilities to ABC as, as a coincidence. But uh, they were able to also secure the upper floor at ABC uh, so that they can expand programming. And so they've reached a time with the renovations where they're expanding the programming. And years ago, the school committees voted uh to set their capital ceiling at seven hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And so at our most recent board meeting, they approached uh the board about increasing that, that limit to one point five million dollars. Uh, as we looked at it, it, it didn't look as if it was necessarily required that the school committees improved that limit. However, all the superintendents of the room felt like it was uh, uh, the most conservative step to take. Uh, so that um, our director had the direction to, to, to proceed forward. So there's no cost, uh, direct cost to us in making this motion. It simply allows them, uh, as they manage their budget through tuitions and things like that from districts and students, allows them to work on their capital up to a ceiling of fifteen hundred, uh, excuse me, fifteen hundred, one point five million. So uh, the link to the ABC's uh memo is included in your, in the, in my report and also in the plan. And there is a recommended motion to increase the uh capital reserve ceiling from seven hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to uh one thousand, one million five hundred thousand dollars. So the renovation projects can move forward. Um, so Madam Chair, I will uh follow your direction on how we would like to just address that.
Um, so we don't have a pre-baked motion on this, but we could certainly get creative.
Um, Ms. Beverito, uh, there is a pre-baked motion, it's in the ABC memo. They provided a recommended motion. Um, so if you were to look at that recommended uh, uh, motion.
And it says that it needs us to um, give a two-thirds vote?
Uh, it, that's actually, it means uh, that two-thirds of the, it has to be approved by two-thirds of the school systems and that Assabut Valley Collaborative.
Okay.
So two-thirds of the member districts is what they're looking for, for that approval.
Alright, is anybody in, like needing clarifying questions before the motion, Mike?
Well, I can, I can ask questions after the motion, doesn't matter to me.
Alright, let's do it after the motion. I can um, make a motion to approve revisions to the capital reserve plan to increase the cap from seven hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred to one point five million dollars and to include capital projects at all of ABC's owned or leased properties. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, you wanna kick it off with a question?
Sure, um, so to the superintendent, I, I, I realize, one of the things that you said was that this comes at no cost to us. Forgive me, I'm just unfamiliar with this, it looks like we're more than doubling the, the ceiling for these capital projects. And obviously that, that money comes from somewhere, I assume that it comes from the member, I assume, and maybe I'm wrong, comes from the member town. So I guess my question is, bottom line, what is our uh, our, our fiscal responsibility when a project does perhaps go up to one point five million? What is our share of that cost?
Uh, we don't necessarily have a share of that cost, Mr. Horish. It's a ceiling that allows them to spend that amount because ABC is a collaborative that, that collects tuitions from the member districts and from non- From the member districts and from non-member districts. And so they have revenue streams that are coming in. So as they work on their revenue streams and their annual budgets, they then. Can spend up to that limit on these capitals. Now, Mr. Hresh. I'm no fool. There's indirect ways to recoup those costs. So in terms of setting tuition rates and things like that are ways that that happens. So. You know, in essence, what ends up happening is, is, um, you know, that's all within the context of omnibus budgets of, of the collaborative. Um, and, and how they bring in their revenue streams, recoup their costs, uh, through services and transportation and go from there. But there's no, like, direct invoice or receipt to our district that we're beholden to pay.
So just as a follow-up, because, because we're a member town of a collaborative, this is just. The member towns giving the blessing procedurally to, to allow for this to happen, but it, it comes to, at no direct cost to the district.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Hresh. And I, I want to reiterate, uh, it's believed that this isn't even required, but the superintendents. Felt it was the most responsible decision to go back to their school committees and let them know. That this, uh, capital reserve ceiling, uh, needs to be increased. And so, um, that's, that's what we're all doing, bringing it to our committees.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rich.
Can I ask whether there's even a cap here? I mean, uh, the, the, we must approve their budgets and stuff like that, right? So why are we, it's, it's an odd control, I guess. Um, I'm not opposed to this, but it seems. And a strange way to constrain this organization. Um, I don't know. Do you know what I mean? If we're not, they, there must be some governance. And we must have some other controls that to just limit their spending. I don't know if you want to opine on that or if we can just punt.
Mr. Eckle, I think in the most layman way I can express it is. Uh, I am a board member of ABC by virtue of being the superintendent of the school system. And, and i- it, it essentially is saying as, uh, the representative of the Nishoba Regional School District on that board. Uh, our, our school committee would endorse raising the capital, uh, reserve limit to one point five million dollars. So but it really is, it's, it's the board of the superintendents that oversees. Uh, you know, the, the, the director and the operations of ABC.
I would think that they don't, that the member districts would want to have some sort of control over how much they can spend on. Capital expenses as opposed to educating and providing services to the children. And so I like that cap. Um, but I understand what you're saying around wanting to raise it because they're trying to improve their facilities. Kirk, would this just be a one-year raise or would it be, I'm sorry if I, if you said this?
It's, it's not even that. It's that seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the capital reserve limit is just not sufficient today. So, so it's not as if they're going to be taking the delta and spending up to one point five two millions. It's an operational piece. To say they can spend because it was originally crafted, approved and created by the school committees of the collaborative. And so, uh, the director wanted the endorsement of the school committee since that's how it was originally crafted.
Got it. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, who are you, Madam Chairman of the Superintendent? I, I, maybe to, to quote the, the chair from earlier this evening, maybe I'm splitting hairs as well, but. Mr. Superintendent, you indicated that, that this vote is actually not required, but the. The collaborative felt that it would be appropriate to have this. Matter put before the member school committees for approval. Did, did I understand that to be correct?
Uh, Mr. Gleason, um. I would sort of connect it to maybe some experiences we've had here before when we've opined on. Do we take a vote or not take a vote on this? And there was disagreement on that in the room. So ultimately the room decided, let's go to the most conservative route. And we all take it to our school committees.
Okay.
So, so as to cover our bases.
Yeah.
And make sure we don't make any mistakes on approval.
Okay, because I'm just looking at the memo and it says two-thirds approval of the member district is required to revise a capital plan. Is that just? Am I just reading that as the, the most recent, uh, decision of the, uh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam, thank Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Great. Rich, another question?
No, I guess, uh, I just, I just wanted to say, uh, I, I think limits. That aren't indexed for inflation are kind of silly, kind of like our campaign finance laws. You know what I mean? This limit has never been changed and what you can contribute now is a fraction of what you could do in like the seventies when they put it together. So. When I see a limit like this, that's just stuck at something and it just reduce in purchasing power every year. It just seems silly to me.
Mr. Eckle, I will take that back, uh, as advisement to the, to the board.
Any other, um, comments before we take the vote? All right, round we go. Rich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Mike?
Um, I will vote yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes, Kirk.
Uh, thank you and thank you, the committee. I will make sure I send a, um, a memo off to ABC, uh, by the end of the week. Um, the last section of my report is a budget update. I don't think I could update it better than Mr. Eckle and Mr. Hresh did earlier tonight. Um, other than there are two points I want to emphasize. Um, the, the entire budget process this year was a team effort. Uh, it was a team effort amongst, uh, all the administrative team of the school district as well as this school committee. And, and, uh, it was done in collaboration with our town members together because it's not what I desire, it's what we desire. And I think it, it behooves us all to remember that. We're moving forward because this is how we all want to move forward. And I will say also, uh, as Mr. Echo brought this up earlier in his report. That, uh, in a Bolton and Stowe, I, I had to get on skates and, and leave the Lancaster meeting to get to the Bolton meeting. Uh, the, the question of OPEB was brought up in both meetings. Uh, so clearly, much in the way that this year we did a real deep dive. On the assessment and how the assessment is crafted and now we have. That presentation that we can archive in our materials and refer people to when they have questions. Um, we're going to take the same style and approach into the OPEB, uh, question for next budget season. So when we get to, um, uh, budget workshop time, expect to see a portion of the workshop dedicated to. Uh, educating the committee on OPEB and that we can take forward to budget and, and of course through crafting that through budget and warrant. As, uh, the members of that committee were very helpful to me in terms of crafting the presentations we did this year. So. I recognize that as an important question we need to dive into and we plan to do that work. So as we, uh, transition Mr. Mul Karen into. Uh, his role as, as Ms. Maroni retires, we'll be using that as a, as a, as a point to grow on and educate our community. So, uh, with that, it's at this point, I will, uh, turn the report over for the teaching and learning update, uh, to Dr. McGuire.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. A few updates from the Teaching and Learning Department. As we kind of round out into spring and into the end of the school year. Um, first thing, we were obviously very busy in the throes of, uh. MCAS testing this spring and that's going off very well in all of our, all of our schools across the district, number one. Uh, number two, the Teaching and Learning Department is highly involved right now in planning our annual summer academy. Um, that is for professional development for teachers, which takes place in the days directly following the last day of, um. Teaching for students. Uh, the offerings this year will continue to deepen the learning centered on diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, as well as offering teachers opportunities to develop curriculum through, um, the equity and inclusion lens. Um, kind of as a shoot-off from our March Professional Development Day. Um, we will also be offering, offering safety care training as well as some ELL training through MatSal. And teachers will continue to develop curriculum, uh, to continue to incorporate the social emotional learning competencies. That we focused on this year through our SEL Train the Trainer model. So. We're excited about Summer Academy and the offerings that we'll continue to offer at the very, very end of June. Uh, we just finished a year-long math curriculum pilot at the elementary level for grades K through five. Bridges Mathematics has the strongest levels of supports from all of our participating teachers and administrators. Following field tests, extensive surveys and tremendous amounts of focus groups this year. It was found that best meet the committee's selection priorities and instructional vision for materials that support students in thinking and communicating. Like mathematicians through rich problems and hands-on exploration. It also meets all expectations of the, uh, Department of Education's. Curate model as well in the curate rubric. Bridges in Mathematics incorporates daily math investigations with a strong emphasis on visual models. And also demonstrating student thinking through mathematics. It has a center, act, centers its activities integrated into the units of study. And a component called Number Corner with daily skill workouts. During the field tests this year, many administrators and teachers noted that students cheered when it was time for math during the Bridges pilot. So in May and June, the end of this month and next month, uh, we will have a focus on planning for a smooth and successful implementation. We'll be doing a tremendous amount of training with teachers to support them in transitioning to a math, new math program in grades K through five. Um, kudos to, uh, our math curriculum lead, Karen Boyver, who led this pilot this year. She did a fantastic job, um, organizing all of this, um, and as well as the transition into, uh, next year with this curriculum.
Dr. McGuire, if you don't mind me interjecting for a moment, um, I think this is an opportunity to, to point out and, and, uh. Uh, thank you for, uh, working with our folks on the math curriculum pilot this year. This is a major point of curriculum that we really tuned into and focused on this year and implementing. And I think it's important to note. That in Dr. McGuire leading this team and this analysis here, this is aligned to the most recent iteration. Of the Massachusetts State Frameworks that were written in twenty eighteen. So our previous curriculum materials were not necessarily up to date. With those standards and through the analysis of the Teaching and Learning Department led by Dr. McGuire. We now have a program that is up to date on the most current, uh, mass standards. So I just thought I'd share that and say thank you to Dr. McGuire and his team.
Thank you, Superintendent. It was a, uh, you know, a great, great year in the field tests and, you know, all of the work that went into it to really. You know, authentically find a curriculum that best fits the district and also meets, you know, the needs and the standards and the benchmarks associated with the, with those frameworks. So. Um, thank you. And then in regards to literacy, you'll, you'll recall that we went through a, you know, a five-year early literacy program through the Reading and Writers Workshop in the past. Um, our early literacy teachers had, um, exciting opportunities in the last month to collaborate with Whitney LaRocque. During some professional development training centered around studying authentic tests, texts, as well as realizing the patterns of power. Um, and this was tied to essential grammar conventions that readers and writers require to make meaning in all the reading and writing that they're doing. Uh, with the reading and writing workshop, we wanted to also tie in the importance of grammar, mechanics, spelling, et cetera. Um, so teachers were able to pilot lessons from her in Jeff Anderson's Patterns of Wonder and Patterns of Power this year. With their students as part of their literacy workshopping time. So teachers are finding students show, show genuine curiosity about the language. About grammar and mechanics as well as spelling. And we're proud to experiment with the conventions, conventions that all writers use. In addition to that reading and writing workshop model. So just an update around, um, ELA as well as math as we kind of, um, finish out the year. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. That's great. And, um, thank you, Kirk. I think that that's the end of the superintendent's update, but it seems we might have a couple of questions if you guys don't mind. I'm gonna go to Mike and then to Amy Cohen.
I am going to yield my time to Amy. I think her hand was up first.
Oh, very good. Thanks. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, Mike. That was very gracious. Um, I, I just wanted to. Uh, thank Todd and, uh, Dr. McGuire for bringing these programs and leading the, the pilots. Cause anything that makes students cheer to do math must be really good.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, regarding the math curriculum pilot, what, what curriculum, um. Is that replacing and did the, um, did the review of curriculum include a review of the use of IXL? Uh, I guess it's kind of.
Yeah, great question. So it did review, it did include the review of IXL and we continue to look at that and whether that's continued to be needed in the district. Um, we also, it's replacing, um, uh, investigations, um, and we continue to use the big ideas math at the middle school level. Uh, but we did take a look at a variety of curricula, um, and we really took a look at that curate model and making sure that. You know, the curriculum, um, really adheres to, um, that, um. Rubric that's associated with making sure that all curriculum that we're using. Adheres to that and meet the standards associated with the Department of Education and the new standards and frameworks. So. It was a very comprehensive pilot K through five, um, and teachers across the districts with, across the district with all students. Participated in that, um, in a variety of focus groups and then coming to final conclusions in the end. With not only the teachers using it, the Teaching and Learning Department, but also each of the individual building principals and their input as well.
Okay, is IXL continuing to be used as a supplemental, um. Tool in the elementary school?
Currently, currently it still is and it's, you know, it, that's going to be something that we continue to look at moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would like to just add some color, uh, to Ms. Cohen's question as well. Um, Dr. McGuire approached me just the other day looking at our contracts and he goes through, meets with. The principals in the Teaching and Learning Department and they examine all the digital tools that we're using, their usage rate. Uh, the number of times students are accessing it independently versus in class, those types of things. So that we can make annual decisions about, well, let's not invest in tools that aren't going to leverage what we're doing. And let's reinvest in the tools that are helping us. With the advent of Renaissance learning coming to us, that's going to be a big instrument to help us understand. What, uh, our students are learning in terms of, of the standards that are tied to our curriculum. So we can make decisions about to what degree we use tools like IXL. So we're going to be cre- increasing our ability to analyze those tools. By bringing in some good assessment systems and that will continue to be a practice in the office.
Great. Thanks, Kirk. I would say, um, just to add to what Amy was saying, I wonder if you guys collect any data. From the users or from the teachers around, um, you know, their impressions of the difference programs?
Yeah, so thanks Leah for that. Um, we did put out a variety of surveys throughout the entire year. Um, to teachers, to administrators and even soliciting student feedback on this. And when we did the kind of the final determining what curricula we would go with. Uh, we analyzed a lot of that data, um, in terms of being able to make a decision. So we do have that survey data. Um, from those different groups of stakeholders and could certainly provide that for, for you folks or the district in terms of. Making that decision. But it's, it was a pretty overwhelming decision to go with Bridges given, um. Just the hands-on experiential, the ability to show, you know, student thinking and how they think about math and how they come up with their answers. Um, you know, similar to STEM, STEM scopes that we brought in a few years ago with science. It was that kind of hands-on. You know, kids really, really engaging with the material.
That's great. Uh, Mike, over to you.
Yep. Thanks again, uh, to Dr. McGuire for the updates. Um, you know, but. Kind of along the same vein as Ms. Cohen, you know, these updates always remind me that, um. They're always aligned with our district improvement plan. I mean, literacy is obviously one of our, our four main goals for the plan. So I really appreciate the updates. Um, I'm wondering if, um, with the revisitation and the realignment of, um. The math curriculum with these, these new standards, I wonder if there is, um, a broader, um. Goal of doing a similar revisitation and a similar alignment at the middle school and high school levels.
Yeah, so great question. And when we take a look at our curriculum review cycle, you know, this was, this was the next piece in our curricular review cycle, K through five. And so often similarly, but like we did with early literacy with reading and writing workshop, we then moved it to the middle school. Um, so we will do that. Um, the bringing in of the new Renaissance learning platform, particularly up through grade nine. This coming year, um, will help us determine, um, where we want to go next. But yes, um, we will take a look at that. Next in terms of the middle school, really in as well as at the high school. And, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled that we're going to be bringing in some of that. Next in terms of the middle school, really, and as well as at the high school and, you know, I'm thrilled that we're going to be bringing in some of that benchmark assessment. Into the high school, particularly at grade nine, so that we know where kids are coming in at from the middle school. And keep in mind, those kids are coming in from three separate middle schools. So that data is going to be really, really important for our freshman teachers and then we can start making some decisions at the high school level as well.
Great. That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Hares, I'll I'll remind you also that. As we know, both in the entry plan findings. And the feedback that that we're examining in strategic planning of which you're participating is going to lead us in building that curriculum plan. So this is going to be a major component of our future work. I should call it a curriculum renewal and refresh plan.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. So I think that that is that for the superintendent's update. We're going to move on to our next agenda item and it is new business. We're going to talk about the district physician contract. And we are going to be asked to approve that contract. So Kirk, maybe to you.
Yeah, one moment. I'm just shuffling through my papers here. So forgive me. I know my background looks a little bit different. I should probably explain. Yes, I'm I'm sitting in the airstream right now. My my. Daughter has come home from college. We're so happy to have her. And there's so much stuff in my house right now and so much activity going on. I needed to go somewhere quiet. So I'm I'm out in the backyard in the airstream. So.
Okay, so you're nowhere you're nowhere like fancy or luxurious.
No, no. So it's so I don't have like my regular school committee routine that I so I'm fumbling through my papers and think so bear with me. Yes, this is the typical contract for our school physician. And you approved this earlier this year. It's typically approved in the springtime for the next year. But it was brought to my attention at one of our very first meetings. And so in doing this, I was able to sort of revisit the approval from last time. And I had a call with Dr. Coleman the other day. About actually, it was it was yesterday that we finally got together. And I learned a couple of things. One of the things is that. Dr. Coleman works with three school systems and I know with Grant, Grant Dunstable and Middlesex. His physicians fee in those school systems are $6,000 and $7,000 respect respectively. And so I am bringing forward to you, we updated this this afternoon and hopefully you got the fresh posting to it. But the major issue in the contract is that we would want to continue with the market analysis. Dr. Coleman was so gracious. He said, yes, that's actually something I've been meaning to talk to you about. But I didn't want to rock the boat because I love Nishoba so much. I love working with Lisa so much. That but yes, you guys are behind the market. In the physician's contract. So we talked about it. And and, you know, he said, look, we can post, he was very gracious. We can postpone it. And I said, no, I think it's responsible looking at the size of our district and whatnot to advance this contract to an annual fee of $5,000. And I think that places that. In a respectful place that's commensurate with surrounding districts. There's also just a couple of just updates that we made in the language relative to this. As you all know, I I reach out to certain members at times to to check my work for me. So I want to thank Ms. Cohen because I I sent it off to her and asked her to kind of check my work on this. Joe, I know I usually send the contracts off to you, but on this one, I I I talked to Ms. Cohen. So just a couple of different things like. MB license in Massachusetts was changed. It was just to recognize the official titles. And and some adjustments in language. So nothing that adjusted the content of the contract, but with that. I would like to put it in front of the school committee to vote approval of the physician's contract for the 2223 school year.
All right. So Mike, do you want to start with a motion?
Yes, sorry. I will move to authorize the superintendent to sign the 2022 2023 school year physicians. Contract between the district and Dr. Russell Coleman. Dr. Coleman will receive a $5,000 stipend under the terms of the contract.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Mike.
Sorry, real quick. First. Superintendent Downing, it's heartwarming to know and that it's well understood that when your daughter returns home from college that your place is in the backyard. That's good to know. Really, I guess I just wanted, you know, for for my sake and then maybe for the community's sake. Can you give us some examples of how we have utilized Dr. Coleman over the past? Year or so and I'm not, I'm not. Setting this up because I'm doubting it. I just think that it's important that we all kind of are aware of how we draw on his expertise.
I I mean, I I would be a rich man if I had a nickel for how many times I have invoked his name this year. And he is a very busy man as he has his own practice, but Nurse Gobek is the one who talks to him the most often. And it's when we have difficult medical cases in the school system, sometimes we have to confer. On like 504 plans and get some guidance if it's a medical 504 plan. Sometimes, you know, all the COVID related items I could list. But I think they're pretty well known to everyone out there. And then if we have any questions about. Making sure we're meeting the medical needs of children at school. He helps us with that. So it's very beneficial in a in a planning aspect as well. So he reviews our health policies. You know, I can think on several occasions when we were all trying to figure things out, you know. September through February of health policies. He turned me, he turned me back to 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 work on my pencil a little bit several times. Before coming to you all with recommendations and just informing me. Of of just sort of the nature and behavior of of. How the health and development of COVID has impacted us. So. The school physician is very important to every school district because we are not medical professions. And we need the guidance and and the wisdom and the counsel of a physician at times. So that we can do right by kids. So we're very grateful to Dr. Coleman for the role he plays.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. Rich, go right ahead.
I just want to say I'm glad that the district is recognizing. The institutional knowledge this gentleman has. Right, this doctor has from working with different districts. So. He has the context, not to mention the training to. Make sure the district isn't one more thing, right? The district does so many things. And, you know, they rely on experts. So I. You know, I'm sure Superintendent Downing and his staff doesn't feel comfortable stepping in the medical round except for Mrs. Gobek and her staff, but. You know, it's good to rely on experts and I'm glad that seems like money well spent. So thanks to both him and you.
And Mr. Echol, his experience in regional school systems is valuable well because he understands the complexities of intertwining towns.
Any further discussion on the physician contract for 2223? Seeing none, we'll take the roll. I'm going to start with Mike.
Yes.
And Brett.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Did I miss you, Joe?
Yeah, I'll vote in favor of her.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to vote yes. Rich.
Yes.
And Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Moving on with our agenda, our next item in new business is the high school DECA donation acceptance vote.
Yes, and and Madam Chair, I'm going to break our normal protocol. Forgive me, Ms. Maroni, but I want to take advantage of the fact that. Dr. Boyton is in the room today. And whenever we can give our high school principal an opportunity to talk about her programs, I want to give her that opportunity. So. Dr. Boyton, would you like to present this item?
I would love to. Thank you so much, Superintendent Downing. Hello, everyone. Happy happy to see everyone. And thank you for honoring my students earlier this evening. So on behalf of Nishoba DECA. I would like to request approval for a $3,500 donation made by Murphy Insurance. This donation will pay for some of the expenses that the DECA program incurred on their recent trip to Atlanta for a national competition. It will fund two $500 DECA leadership scholarships that are awarded to two Nishoba. Seniors who participate in the DECA program on senior awards night this spring. And it will be seed money for our next competition season as well as engaging in fundraisers. So without further ado, I respectfully ask for school committee approval for this very generous donation.
Excellent. Thanks, Dr. Boyton. Appreciate you being here and sharing with us that. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Horace. Can you give us the motion or read the motion?
Sure, I will move to accept the donation for $3,500 to the Nishoba Regional High School DECA Club. From Murphy Insurance, the donation is to be used for. Payment for some of the expenses incurred on a recent trip to Atlanta. Fund two $500 Nishoba DECA leadership scholarships given to two Nishoba seniors on senior awards night. And seed money for future competition seasons and fundraisers.
Can I have a second? Second.
Second.
Amy Cohen, nice job. Yep. Any discussion on this donation? Other than saying we are so grateful for the local businesses and groups that continue to give to our students because. Our DECA program is phenomenal. It's got to be one of the biggest DECA programs. In like the entire world. I'm fairly certain that's true.
But almost almost 25% of our students participate in DECA.
Unbelievable. It's such a popular program and I know all the kids have so much success with it. It's very relevant. And the teachers do a great job. So thank you to our local businesses for supporting this great program that. Can, you know, get the kids really involved in Nishoba High. So let's take the roll. Let's see who wants to accept this money. Mr. Echol.
Indeed, I do. Thank you very much to Murphy Insurance.
Yep, myself. Yes. Ms. Vessels.
Yes.
Ms. Pock.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason.
Yes.
Ms. Devine.
Yes.
Mr. Horace.
Yes.
And Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Great. All set. Kirk, we're good to go there. Thanks, Dr. Boyton.
Thank you. And I I promise not to steal Pat's thunder the rest of the evening.
All right, good. So speaking of Pat, we're moving on to our business manager report. And we're going to start with the school lunch price review, Pat.
Yes, I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint.
Oh, we love PowerPoints.
It's not working. Okay, can anybody see that?
I can see it.
Okay. So.
Pat, do you want that in presentation mode or does it matter?
Yeah, I'd like it in presentation mode, but it won't, doesn't seem to want.
All the way to the left. It says from beginning.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. So in a discussion with. John Olkacash, who was our food service director. I thought that. You know, we should review the rates that could possibly be necessary for. For school lunch for next year. And we went over all the costs of provisions and and salaries and everything and. I just wanted to let everybody know that it's been a couple of years since we have had an increase in school lunch costs. The current price for school lunch is $3.30. And the grocery pricing has increased an average of 9% just since July. Paper goods have increased 15% since July 1st. And bread and bakery have increased 35% since July 1st. Current rate of inflation is hovering at 8%. And the Biden administration did not request continued funding for universal free meals for all students for fiscal year 23. And any of the economic relief bills sent to Congress. And. The Massachusetts House included funding for an additional year of universal free lunch for all students in its budget. And the state senate did not. We anticipate that the loss of universal free meals. Current rate of inflation and the high cost of energy will decrease current levels of participation. Right now we have 100%. Or some not quite 100%. It's. Probably hovering more around 70% of participation. And that's going to drop significantly because again. The cost of the lunches themselves and and what families have to. I don't know why it's doing that. Have to spend on that type of. You know, on a meal for a kid every day. Sometimes, you know, it just isn't possible. So to ensure that we can meet the National School Lunch Program requirements, we are requesting a 9% increase. In the charge for school lunch. The price would increase 30 cents to $3.60. I'm opening the discussion, you know. Talk about this and when anybody thinks whether or not this is a good time to do this.
Anybody want to take this one on? Pat, to clarify, it's a done deal in the state legislature. There there's no avenue for this to.
Not, not at this point.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that it couldn't happen. As an amendment at some point in time, they've been trying to. Push this through, but again. There are a lot of things that haven't gone through at the state level that we would have liked to see. And this is just one of the bigger ones.
Okay, Kirk.
Yeah, is it okay to bring the slide deck down again?
Sure.
Just in order to see the committee. I just wanted to add in there, Ms. Ruberito, we, Madam Chair, we we need to just be prepared for that moment. And so as we looked at what the costs of lunches are and what what. We have some things to do. We we need to engage our community. We'll we'll start doing that. Last week of of May and into June about those who are free and reduced lunch eligible. But have not filed for that because they haven't had the need to. We need to do some educating of our community to do that. So there's multiple and because that gives you access into other things and it can be a baseline for access to programming. It also is involved in our state numbers and how we're funded for Title I. So. We're going to be on a charge to do that beginning end of May into June. And then, of course, at the very beginning of the year as we're enrolling students. So I know that that the the state taking up the issue is not a done deal at this point. Because the budget has not been voted and we've seen updates from both the House and the Senate as it's been tossed back and forth. You know, shamelessly lobbied President Spilka of the of the Massachusetts State Senate. To. Get this moving in the Senate as well. And she acknowledged, yes, you know, our colleagues in the House took this up and I was like. So the Senate, right? And and so I'm just hopeful. You know, I obviously didn't get a committal or anything, but just hopeful that the state can, because I think it's been such a valuable instrument. To families all across the common wealth in our country. As compulsory in many nations across the the world. Nutrition is is a compulsory part of school. So anyway, we hope that that's there, but we can't plan based on our hopes. We got to plan on. What are the scenarios we could be faced with? And if we're going to be able to have a sustainable lunch program, this is the time that we need to look at increasing the costs.
Are you looking for a motion on this, Kirk, for us to vote tonight?
I believe we just have it presented tonight with a motion for next meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead, Karen.
I just wanted to say thank you, Kirk. That was you read my mind about the free and reduced lunch and I was just thinking about how that's going to impact some of our families. So. I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to be proactive about reaching out. And not just counting on families to find the information on their own. So that's that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, seeing none, I think, Pat, you are going to keep going.
Amy Vessel's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy. Go right ahead.
I had a student working on this for their CAT project. So I know we've been talking to. We've talked been talking to Representative Hogan about it. And I was wondering, yeah, one of my students at Hudson High was working with her on it, advocating for it. Is there, um, is that something that we should make the community more aware of? Is that something that people could be, you know, talking to their representative about? And it's not a decided deal yet? You know what I'm trying to say? Um, in terms of their support for it. Um, and my other question is, we found at Hudson that the materials were not in multiple languages about the things that were available for families. And I didn't know if that was something that had been, um, that was true at, uh, Neshova as well.
I believe we do have it in multiple languages.
Yeah, we'll work closely with our principals and guidance departments to make sure the information's getting out to all of our families in, in the language that, that they can most easily navigate.
We can easily do that and we usually make sure that that is done with any communication that goes out. But if there's any that we're missing, please let us know and we'll make sure that that gets done.
Just to Amy's first question, so I think maybe I wasn't being clear earlier. Are you saying that the Senate has already voted it down or that there is still life in this bill?
There, there's life in it because the, each side puts together their budgets and then they spend the budget season, uh, wrangling over whose things get to be in what. So until the budget is signed by the governor, it's not done. Um, and so a final vote on the budget has yet to come forward from Beacon Hill. So until that moment happens, there's always room for adjustment to the budget in any sector line item of the budget.
And so to anybody watching, the community could, you know, put pressure on our senators, our state senators, there are 40, 40 of them.
Well, and, and, and I know our urban superintendents are doing that and in particular. Um, so yes, uh, we could all join in that chorus.
Great. Thanks, Amy. All right. I think that's all that we have for that. So keep it going, Pat. Keep this train rolling.
So I have a transportation update. Um, I've been working with our, um, transportation provider, D-Bus. And, um, just for a few months now, when we've been, um, looking at the routes in a couple of our towns and trying to find some efficiencies. And in doing so, um, on April 28th, the Florence Sawyer School, and on May 12th, the Mary Rollinson Elementary School, there were changes made to the bus routes. The parents were notified of said changes and the changes will continue until the end of the school year. And when I say changes, we're trying to reduce the number of buses. There are some buses that are really full and some that are not. So we were basically paying for too many buses and somebody um, with in-depth knowledge really needed to take a look at this and, and make some changes that wouldn't affect the amount of time that a kid was traveling on a bus. And, and just to be fair about the whole transportation situation. So the changes in the bus routes resulted in a, a 20, about a $25,000 savings for us for this year. And it will, we expect to continue that for next year, provided there isn't any significant uptick in enrollment. And that will result in $153,000 in savings for our transportation. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, that these types of things are what we look at, um, and we're going to continue to look at this in the future. Any questions?
Thanks, Pat. That's great news. Let's keep rolling.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen again. This is, um, results of operation for the month of March, which has gone by and April has come. Um, after that, so as you can see, just to, um, summarize, there's about a $912,000 um, surplus in the budget. Again, we have some, um, substitute teacher, um, overages, we have some facilities overages at this point. And we have some surpluses in a couple of other lines that are mostly due to staffing and some tuition, out of district tuition changes. And I can show you the previous year as well as I've been asked to do um, by the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. And you can see it's trending in a similar matter, manner rather, um, just a, um, oh, $30,000, $40,000 difference from last year. I'll, I'll go back to the other. Does anybody have any questions about March? No? Okay. So. This is the month of April. As you can see, we're still hovering around that same amount. Um, there are some changes that, um, have come to light since April that will show up in the next results of operation. But at this point in time, when, um, I did this report, this is what it looked like to us. And again, you can see the facilities department. Um, and most of these costs are driven by the fuel, price of fuel and the cost of electricity, the increase in, of the cost of electricity due to having windows open, fans having to run, um, the, um, air filtration in the classrooms. And, um, again, the substitute teachers, you can see that it's about the same. But again, we have a couple of more that, um, a couple of more costs that have come into light going into the next month that you'll see, which would, and I think we have a pretty good idea where we, we're going to land at this point. So, um, I'll just show you last year's results of operations for April. So you can see whoop, too far. Where we were at that point, really not that much different. Um, so does anybody have any questions about April? And any of the increases or decreases?
So I see Mike's hand first. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, this is not a question, um, but more of, um, a recognition. Um, last time Budget and Warrant met, it was a joint meeting between Budget and Warrant and Audit Advisory. Um, and there was, um, explicit recognition in how linear and how clear these, um, results of operations documents are. Um, uh, and I would say that it was almost effusive. Um, so that's to Pat's credit. I think, I think as far as I'm concerned, as long as I've been on the committee, um, this is how results of operations are always presented and maybe we take them for granted. But the fact that this translates well to the public um, is a real testament to, um, the work that, that Pat, uh, puts forth in putting these together. So no question, just a thank you. To Pat.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, just building on what Mike said, um, I think it speaks to, you know, these, these meetings we talk about, we get an opportunity to see these operations reports before they come before the committee. And, uh, I would just echo that the forecasting is, is quite accurate. I mean, they're almost a pro forma meeting in that she presented to us and we ask a couple of questions, but the explanations are very clear. So, um, and I think most importantly, if you look, this, it's obvious to us, part of the role of the Budget and Warrant Committee and the Audit Advisor Committee, to be honest, is to look at the financial controls and make sure that, um, they seem credible. And I, I can tell you my personal opinion is that they are, and you can see that in the forecasting. Um, so we're not, we're, we don't seem to be surprised very often. And I think that's what everybody's aiming for. So kudos to Pat and the team.
Great. Thanks, Rich. All right. Uh, so Pat, I think that that might be it for questions for you. Thank you so much for that presentation, that update. We're going to move on to, uh, my favorite part of the meeting, and that is the Student Representative Report. Sonia or Dan? Um, are you still with us?
Yeah. Hi, yes, I'm actually at the high school right now, um, watching the band concert. So, um, we have lots to report. Let me just run away. But, uh, Dan, do you want to start?
Yeah, sure, I can start. So we do have, as you know, the prom coming up pretty soon. I think that's May 27th. That'll, that's pretty exciting. Uh, we did have, uh, the tennis team play today. Unfortunately, they, they didn't win, but they've been having a really good season. So they have potential to go places. Uh, there's also, uh, as a lot of you probably know, the AP testing, uh, were in the last couple of weeks. So those are, those people who are in AP classes really had a chance to get those college credits. And then we had sophomores taking MCAS this week. Uh, there is MCAS today, actually, MCAS testing. So, uh, there's that. And, um, there's the Senior Spirit Week tomorrow.
And yeah, in the next few days.
Yep. And do you, you want to take it over from me?
Sure.
All right.
Yeah. Um, in other sports news, both boys and girls track teams won leagues last night. So that's really exciting. Um, after an undefeated season for both of us. Um, that was really exciting. The girls hadn't won league since 2018. So that was great. Um, and then we have senior prom this Friday after the half day. And, um, the rest of the tennis season has been really good for both the boys and the girls. Um, the baseball team, I think it's, has been playing. Oh, my God, the numbers in my head. I think it's nine, seven. They're, in their little like season report. Um, the lacrosse teams, both have had pretty good seasons if I'm correct. Um, our robotics team over April break went to another, uh, what do you call it?
Quarterfinal?
Yeah, but yeah, they made it to the quarterfinals. Um, and then got, it's called, they lost in the semifinals again. Um, but they're heading into their off season. Yeah. They got invited to Worlds, but because of the budgets, they are not able to go. But that's really exciting that they qualified for Worlds. Um, and our, there was a suspicious amount of seniors not here this Monday. Um, but, and other senior news, like Dan said, senior week is starting tomorrow. So we have green out and then I forget the rest of the spirit days. Um, we have our senior breakfast, um, next Wednesday, which is going to be our last day of school. It's going to get emotional, but that's okay. Um, and there was the German Honors Society induction ceremony tonight. So I saw some candles and German talking. I don't know. It seemed fun, um, bringing up the underclassmen into the honors program. And we have a few more AP makeups in the next few weeks. Um, but, yeah, and there has been a little bit of, like, it's been an increase in mask wearing with the rise in numbers, um, but that is to be expected. And yeah. Oh, and scholarship and awards night is coming up soon. So that is also very exciting. We have a lot of, um, seniors who applied for scholarships and are ready for that. Um, and our senior decision board has also been really updated. I'll go show it off. Do my track skills. Very professional.
Oh, Sonia, you're headed to our, our Wolves, the Wolves League of the Den, right? I know. Can, can you explain what is a decision board?
Yes, I will. I think it was. Here's our, um, our first pack to leave the den. So we have all of our senior decisions. Everyone has their little paw print. There's mine. Uh, but it's really exciting. We had our last, um, meeting with the seniors for student council today. So that was also really sweet. It's a lot of senior things are happening and it's, it's exciting. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of excitement for, for a lot of things. And especially with the weather too. So, yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you, Sonia. Thank you, Dan, as always. Uh, before you jump off, I wonder, does the committee have any questions about the report? I love that bulletin board. Isn't it great? It's great.
I love that you showed us the bulletin board. And your excitement is just contagious. So thank you so much for sharing that report with us and being a part of the school committee this, this year. You've been a great addition, both, both you and Dan. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So Sonia, this is probably your last school committee meeting?
Oh, I think so.
Indeed.
I can't like think too much about it because then I'll cry, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just looking at tomorrow, probably.
Yes, I, I gave a tremendous, um, like, push for our underclassmen to get involved next year. Um, today at student council, I was like, going on and on. I really enjoyed being a part of this and it's changed me as a person and I'm so grateful to be a part of it.
Well, we're not surprised to hear you say that you've learned so much from an experience. That's the kind of person you are, Sonia. And I got to brag on you a little bit at town meeting the other day because I met your dad.
Oh, I was so sad that I couldn't go. He had a track meet. I was, he was texting me updates as it were, because now I'm 18, I finally could book.
Well, that's.
I'll be there.
You're going to be a great ambassador for Neshova going out into the world and we are so appreciative of your service. So thank you for being here with us all of these times.
Thank you. I'm so glad to, I'll say it again. I'm just so glad to have been a part of this.
Yeah, and I'll give it to Kate next. Go ahead, Kate.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to cry because Sonia, I just, I didn't even realize that this was probably your last meeting. I can't, you, you and Dan have been amazing this year. I have just loved getting to know you. The way you've contributed to our school community is phenomenal. You are off to do amazing things and change the world. And you've already made us proud, but you're just going to make us even prouder. Um, I feel really horrible that we didn't do something like, I just completely just dropped off. So, anyway, perhaps we can think of something at the next meeting to like formally honor your service, which is wonderful. Um, so thank you so much. And Dan, thank you as well. And, uh, you know, you're going to, you're going to be our torchbearer, Dan, for next year and, and kind of guiding, um, the next, uh, student who gets involved. You're, you're going to be our, our leader and our guide. So looking to you for that, which is amazing. Um, thanks so much to both of you. It's been tremendous.
Maybe we can all do one of our school committee silent rounds of applause. Very good. Awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I just wanted to say thank you for that very, uh, teenagery moment where she picked up her phone and walked down the hall. I felt a little sick trying to watch her walk with her phone.
I think she was running. She was definitely.
That was very, oh, was she? That was very, uh, uh, zen and meta all at the same time.
All right. Well, thank you again, Sonia and Dan. We will see you, uh, around. Dan, we'll see you next time. You're not off the hook.
Yep.
Bye, guys. Um, all right, guys. So to unfinished business, we are going to begin with the superintendent evaluation vote. Um, but Kirk, do you have a golden hand up first?
Yeah, just, uh, Madam Chair, for just, uh, the, the convenience of one of our guests. I, would you like to take up the NRHS Civil Rights Trip Approval Vote? Uh, that teacher is in our waiting room right now.
Oh, absolutely. Without objection, folks, we're going to switch up the exchange, uh, or rather, we're going to switch up the order on the agenda. I don't see any objections. So, uh, next we will go to the NRHS Civil Rights Trip Approval Vote. And if you don't mind, I'd like to start with a motion if Mr. Horish is ready. Hi, Greg. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, thanks for having me.
All right. So I will make a motion to, uh, conditionally approve the Civil Rights Focus six-day trip scheduled for April Vacation 2023, allowing students to start enrolling on the trip with the understanding that a final school committee vote will take place in September 2022.
I'll second that. And, um, one of our teachers who is the champion of these trips, Mr. Denson is here. And Greg, is there anything that you want to say that you haven't already said, um, before just any discussion ensues?
I, I did submit, um, a slideshow. If you'd like me to go through that, I thought it would be helpful to answer the questions that came up. Uh, the last meeting, I was able to go back to World Strides and, and get some more information and change some things. Would that be?
Uh, the last meeting, I was able to go back to World Strides and, and get some more information and change some things. Would that be helpful?
Awesome, yeah. So you can share it or Alita can?
I think I can share.
Great.
Uh, so one thing I didn't realize is that there was a question about the chaperones. Because my understanding has been that it would always be the Shova staff, so the, the question of fingerprinting and Cory checks, I, I didn't worry about. Um, I also didn't recruit beforehand because I didn't have a trip approved. Um, I do have enough people, if I needed to go next week, I could. Uh, but I have some people who really want to go, but they need some time. And so I felt I'd rather give the people time that really want to go than bring some people who are saying, I'm willing to go, but it's not my trip. I think they're hoping that I go to Italy or something like that and that they can get onto that trip. Um, but that's fine, but I have at this point more than seven people that are at least willing or interested. But I'd like some time to finalize that if possible. Last week or two weeks ago, we talked about the cost. The goal would be forty-eight students, uh, if the chair is correct that there's, that the interest is, is so high that we, we need to limit who goes in that first round, I think we'll get to forty-eight. Uh, and so I put in the full refund program, said this is, let's just assume we're gonna use it or need it. And so that cost would be nineteen seventy-five per student. Uh, total cost ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars if we get to forty-eight. If we're a, a little off, um, it, it's not that much more expensive, the cost of the district as always with these trips is, is zero dollars. Um, here's the big thing, World Strides had said they will give us until October first to approve or cancel the trip with everybody getting a full refund if we cancel, so that's why I'm asking for a final vote in September. That way people can enroll now. Um, they can change their mind and cancel, they'll get a refund, or they can save their money, the kids often get summer jobs. Um, pay for it themselves, that's where it's, it's a lot different than, than some of the trips for the younger grades. Um, so we would move forward, people would put in deposit. And then monthly payments coming after that. So again, I highlighted if you, if you enroll on June first, your first monthly payment is going to be due July first. So you can see that the difference there is not that significant. If we only had less than forty students, but over thirty, we'd be about two hundred ninety dollars more for, for that trip. But the monthly payments, not a huge difference. I did put in December because there was a question about why are, why am I asking so early? And I thought I was asking really late. I don't know, some of you might remember back before the pandemic, that we had a PLT that I was a part of that was looking at global citizenship. And one of the things that we heard really early on was enroll early, give kids as much time as possible. Um, if you even, if you can, tell kids and families before they get to the high school, what the trips will be for the next four years. So that a year and a half before a trip, if you enroll, you can see the difference on, on a monthly payment if we had, if we did enrollment back in November, and I know we couldn't at that point. Um, that monthly payment of a hundred six dollars is pretty reasonable, especially when you think about kid, that kids that are paying for it themselves. No matter what final payment, and so hopefully moving forward at some point, we can get to that again. Uh, that would be my goal, uh, because I think it'll make it a lot easier for people to plan. Um, final payment due by February first, um, regardless of when you start. I'm not planning any group fundraising, uh, that it, it's come up. The kids, every time we've, we've started talking about trips have said, I'd rather get a job. And so I'm not gonna, you know, try to do a car wash or a spaghetti dinner by myself. Um, if the kids don't want to do it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to, excuse, excuse me, force them. A lot of them will do private fundraising, they'll get, you know, family, uh, especially with the extra time, um, to, to help them out, but a lot of it's just personal. Um, either parents or guardians paying for it or the kids doing it themselves. I think with time, if we can build a program, if we can become like a Deca where we have kids coming through the program year after year. At that point, yeah, you do start to, you can build sponsorship, you can have groups that want to support it, that want to be a part of it, and you'll, maybe then we can start doing things with groups. But right now I, I don't see it happening. And if the kids come to me and say we want to, okay, we'll talk about it. Uh, students can apply for travel scholarships after enrolling, that's the money coming directly from World Strides that I mentioned last time. Uh, so what I'm looking at right now is that sit same parent meeting I brought up before on May thirty-first. World Strides has said, yes, we can open enrollment for seniors only, so everybody that wants to come, wants to hear about the trip could come May thirty-first. Uh, my plan is to do a Zoom meeting, so World Strides can have a representative there as well. And it's accessible for everyone. Discuss the trip, tell them, you know, more detail than I've gone into, answer questions. Hopefully that night seniors can enroll if they want. Paying a deposit, the following Monday, open it up, assuming there's still space, and if there isn't, then we opening it up for a waitlist. Um, for anybody else that's, that wants to enroll. Uh, and that, that gives the students, their families, the time to to make those, start making those payments, making the plans. Um, and then in September, I could come back, tell you, these are the numbers and here's my list of chaperones because we're, we're a lot closer and I think I could kind of nail people down on that. Um, and then if we, if we don't have the numbers or if the committee decides to know that we don't want to do this trip, we cancel and everybody gets a full refund, including the, the full refund program, which was normally the non-refundable, uh, cancel for any reason, reason insurance. So, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Doesn't look like it. That was a fantastic presentation.
Wait, you, you all helped me with the questions, you really did, because I was able to go back to World Strides and look at, well, these are their concerns, how can we address these? And, and so they, they actually watched the, the meeting, it was nice that it's on YouTube, so it's easily accessible, so they could see what, what people were saying. Um, and then we could, you know, fix it. I was very happy that with the, the October first uh, extension, because normally they only do thirty days. Um, so I think they're convinced that we're not gonna have any problem filling this trip, based on the experience they're having with other schools.
I agree. We shall see though, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Um, I think we might be ready to vote. So for uh, the motion that's in the chat or on the floor, so to speak, uh, Rich, what say you?
Yes.
I say yes. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Uh, Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Go travel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, everybody, so um, we flipped that agenda item and now we are back to the superintendent evaluation vote. So, um, I am gonna share my screen and I will pull up the composite evaluation that I sent to all of you guys um, the other day. And um, I think that what I first said was that I would love to just take any grammatical corrections and we're not talking about like sentence structure, not to that detail. Um, we're just try, can you just tell me if you see any misspellings or anything like that? And Mike, can I lean on you to call on people because I can't see anyone?
Lean on me.
Alright, any grammar problems that you guys saw?
I see nobody.
Okie dokie. Um, so, uh, what I'd like to do now is put a motion on the floor. Okay, so this is what I thought we would do, we would move to accept the evaluation and then in the discussion, we could accept amendments. I think that that's perhaps the cleanest way to do this. And so Mike, I think that you might have a motion for us.
Sure, uh, I'll move to approve the superintendent's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two evaluation as presented.
And I'll second. And so at this stage, everyone, um, I'd like to just very quickly, for the benefit of the public, go through the, the composite evaluation. Which is the combination of all of the individual evaluations that school committee members submitted based upon Kirk's presentation at his summative um, presentation. So, as you guys know, step one is the, the goal setting, and so Kirk had three really lofty goals that he set, and as you can see, as we go down here, goal one, there was broad agreement that Kirk met this goal around um, a comprehensive communication strategy. And um, clearly, everybody in the, in our communities, they can read this online, so I won't go through the evaluator comments, but we felt he met that goal. Uh, for goal two, which was uh, basically um, the benchmark assessment platform, uh, we refer to this as Renaissance learning. Um, we believe as a committee that Kirk made significant progress toward this goal, considering that it was brought online in the Lancaster Public Schools as a pilot. And his uh, presentation to us explained how he is going to roll that out over the uh, next school year with all of the other children in the district. So significant progress there, a very lofty goal, by the way. Um, goal number three was around um, creating or rather conducting the entry investigation. Uh, developing the findings and then presenting the entry report to us at its formative evaluation presentation that was done, and then that is then used to build a five-year strategic plan, which is another very, very lofty goal, a lot of uh, moving parts with building a strategic plan that is well underway. And the committee believes that Kirk has made significant progress toward this, largely because the strategic plan will not be presented to us until um, June fifteenth. This is why it is going to be incumbent upon us to meet one additional time in June, by the way. So that we can then, um, it would probably only be a one-item agenda where we would approve the strategic plan. It was presented on the fifteenth. We can talk more about that later, but significant progress made toward this. Uh, the second stage of the evaluation cycle is to then look at all of the standards and indicators that we pre-identified as the select set that we wanted Kirk to work toward. Um, so we see here um, in standard one instructional leadership, that there was some kind of not disagreement, but there was, there was not really clear agreement on one A. Um, the members were actually um, across needs improvement, proficient and exemplary in the individual reports, and so this is something that we might want to discuss around maybe changing this, it's up to you guys. Um, there was a belief that instruction, there was um, proficiency there, and the overall rating of standard one was proficient. Then as we moved to standard two, it was pretty general agreement that with regard to management and operations, that um, Kirk had reached the proficient level. And the overall um, evaluation is proficient. With standards three, family and community engagement, there was um, a belief that proficiency was the level that Kirk reached. You know, keeping in mind that is amazing as the work that Kirk has done this year. Um, the category of exemplary is designed for educators and educator leaders who are actually modeling their programming to other people in their cohorts, so you know, as a first-year superintendent, it would be very difficult for Kirk to be a model, even though moving down the line. You might see exemplary as a much more common answer in his evaluations, that's up to the committee, of course. Um, but in management and operate, or excuse me, family and community engagement, we marked him overall as proficient. And then the last standard, standard four is professional culture, same thing. We marked, um, you know, the indicator that we focused on was cultural proficiency. And with regard to that, we um, evaluated Kirk at proficient, again with an overall rating of proficient. And so then, you know, the most important part of the evaluation is to take all of the above and then decide on the four, um, you know, categories, where is Kirk overall? And so our overall summative rating of Kirk, we said is proficient. And um, you know, there is general agreement across all the individual committee of value, committee member evaluations that Kirk has done an outstanding job this year and that his performance um, surpassed many of our expectations at various times, and we are just very, very grateful for his leadership in our school district. Um, but at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the committee and ask if there's anything that you would like to amend on this composite evaluation. And Mike, I lean on you again to find the golden hands.
I don't see anyone. Uh, I see Amy Cohen.
Uh, this isn't really a, a question, but just I want to thank Leah for, for doing such a nice job of taking all of our evaluations and presenting it in um, I don't know, in such a coherent, understandable and appropriate manner. I think the fact that nobody's raising their hand right away kind of reflects that you've, you know, done a good job capturing our, our summative thoughts, so thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Go ahead, Sharon. Sharon, I think you're muted. Darn it.
I know, thank you. Um, I do have a question, if you can scroll up to the place where uh, I think it was the first goal, second goal.
Was it the communication goal or Renaissance learning?
It was the one where you had said where there was a, a lot of variation among the committee.
Got it, so it's in the standards and it was on this box right here, curriculum.
Yes, so and I think what you said is that there was a lot of variation there with um, between those three categories of needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. And I'm wondering why it, you came upon the needs improvement as the highlighted one where it was all across the board.
Um, so the reason being is that the, the way that some people um, use the tool, they didn't highlight specifically inside these boxes, they just gave an overall rating. Or su, as proficient, or some people did highlight needs improvement. I think one person highlighted exemplary, I think two people highlighted proficient. But in looking at the commentary that everybody put forth there, um, and the language of this particular kind of persnickety indicator here. Um, I thought, and this is just me trying to extrapolate out what maybe the committee thinks, and you guys can tell me if you want to amend it, please do. Um, I thought that considering there was general agreement that the curriculum across the, across the district is out of sync in various places. That the language kind of hamstrung us to choose needs improvement. Because the language says ensures most instructional staff implement standard-based assess uh, units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons, curricula in some schools or content areas lack appropriate alignment. And so based upon the commentary and the way that the language kind of bound me as the evaluator. Um, I think that everybody is in agreement that the curriculum is out of line at various places. And I know that um, the, you know, the NEASC report focuses just on the high school. Um, but in various other places in the district, curriculum is going to need to be a focus next year. Um, especially at the secondary level, and so you know, the language of proficient said that um, ensures that all instructional staff are using rigorous standards-based units of instruction and well-structured lessons. So like the proficient category is not actually true. Um, now that said, I want to make it clear to the community um, and express to my fellow committee members, my belief that you know, this is not something that is corrected in a year, it's not something that can be um, easily you know, fixed, curriculum is an ongoing or curriculum, the curriculum renew cycle is an ongoing rigorous team-based methodology that requires many, many professionals to collaborate at very high and effective, efficient levels. And so would this have been possible to, to do in ten months? Uh, you know, under Kirk's leadership, I, I would argue no. Uh, you know, under Kirk's leadership, I, I would argue no. That it was, it is kind of an impossible ask. Um, so again, Mike, I lean on you. If there are any other hands in the air, anybody who wants to amend. The overall rating is proficient still um in, in standard one.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, everybody. So I'm gonna stop sharing. And if there's no further discussion. We can get ready for the vote. So the motion is on the floor to accept the um composite evaluation as presented. Uh, I'm gonna vote yes. Rich.
Yes.
Amy.
Uh, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna abstain because I haven't been here for the process.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. Joe.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Uh, Karen.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, and uh, a hearty congratulations to the superintendent on the completion of his first year, truly.
Sharon.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, so the evaluation um is accepted. And our highly proficient superintendent is congratulated on a very, very, very successful first year. We're so grateful, Kirk, truly.
No, I thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you, committee. Um, you know, we're in it together, like I said earlier, and we're gonna continue to grow. Um, uh, you know, on, to, to capitalize on that note about curriculum. I pointed it out to you all in my entry plan that it's a problem, and we got, we have some places to work on and look at this. So um, as we work toward that, uh, just remember, don't lose some of the great work, curriculum work that's come out of the teaching and learning departments or document acquires leadership. Particularly around the area of math that we discussed tonight as an important, we're never gonna be able to work on the whole curriculum in one year. Uh, that's why we need a comprehensive rolling cycle of each uh curriculum area. Uh, so that we're in a constant state of renewal in at least one sector of the curriculum every single year.
Yes, absolutely. Um, not to overshadow all the amazing things that are being done every single day by every single teacher. In our district, we're so grateful for everything that everyone does to help our kids.
I, I got to do a walkthrough in um the high school today. And uh, today our focus was in on the industrial ed work that students are doing, as well as robotics. And the creative project-based types of learning these kids are doing. It was just exciting to see the results of their work, so. With there, there's, there are some awesome things happening in our school system.
We know it. Um, yeah, so we really appreciate um. You submitting all of that work to us, Kirk. Um, you did just a ton of work this year, just to present. All of the work that you've done. That was a part-time job, just explaining all that you've done. It's clear to all of us that you've done a great job and we appreciate it very much, you and your entire team. So thanks. Um, all right, everybody, so now we get to move on to the uh School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding Vote. And uh, maybe Kirk, you would want to tee it up a little bit before we take the motion?
Uh, yes, I will. Again, uh, let me go through my disheveled stack of papers here. Um, in front of you are two pieces and uh personal discussions we had previously on. Um, the MOU, uh, the MOU refers to the operating procedures of, of. Uh, the school system in conjunction with the superintendent. And so in that way. Uh, the School Resource Officer Policy from the Bolton Police Department was added to your packet this week. Because it provides the detail of understanding in terms of, of where our School Resource Officer steps in. I'll just highlight one detail, for instance, let's say we were to have a situation where um, uh, there was. Uh, a reason or rationale for a student to be uh arrested. Um, they would do that outside of school hours in a discretionary way, right? That was, there's a, a line in there about that. I won't go through all those provisions. I just cite that as an example of. How these provisions are crafted. Um, and uh, how it meets the mass accreditation standards for school resource officers. Uh, as, as sort of a standard basis, uh, through the guidance of, of Chief Warren as well, so Lauren Nelson. So um, with that, you know, uh, I'll, I'll take any further questions about the MOU. And uh, the accompanying document, uh, if any of our community members have it.
Anyone want to weigh in here? Go ahead, Joe.
Good, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, first of all, I want to thank um Superintendent Downing for including the um. Policy eleven point two six, which is the standard operating procedures for the MRO, MOU as part of our package tonight. Um. One of the things that I, I, I would say as far as this MOU is concerned, and I know the chair and the superintendent and a couple of the members of this committee. Have known that I've been rather critical of the way that this document was crafted and the way this document has been presented. Um, my critique would continue at least um, in, in more of a tepid fashion this evening. Because uh, in my discussion with the superintendent, I did indicate that, look. You know, I, I'm not ecstatic with a lot of the provisions of the MOU. I'm particularly concerned as, not as a district committee member, but as a parent of a future high school student. Um, relative to the issue of student rights and access to student records. And as I pointed out the last committee meeting. The um, one of the provisions or part of the provisions of this, of this document is that um. The, the SRO is designated as a special employee of the district, and they're provided without consent. Uh, authorization for access to certain student records. Now, that's not IEPs and type of board plans, but it does. Have a provision in there that they are designated as a um, a special district employee with um. Authorized access to student records. In addition to that, um, my other concern was that the um, I, I don't think that the document in the manner which is crafted. Actually addresses the issue of proper of student rights. And I'm particularly concerned about the language. On page uh three of the agreement, which talks about um custodial questioning, custodial detentions. And notification to parents. And the language is very tepid. It says, well, you know, if there's gonna be a custodial detention, a custodial questioning the child. You know, it's up to the SRO to contact the um, the student's parents or guardian and invite them. And offer them the opportunity to be present during the interview. Um, I, I'm sure that for some that may be sufficient, that I think for others like myself, I think that to be wholly inefficient. Um, I don't think that any student in our district. And any school in our district should be questioned by any law enforcement officer unless and until they have a parent. Present, and that parent is advised of that child's legal rights and the right to legal counsel. And I don't think there should be any questioning of, of that child until a parent is there. This, this, well, we'll invite them down and you'll say maybe present. No, we shouldn't be questioning any student in our district uh until such time as their parents do that. But that being said. I, I'm gonna vote in favor of this MOU for one particular reason, and I, I made a request through my colleague, Mr. Horish. If the town of Bolton would be so kind as to provide to me the um. The, the policy statements of the Bolton Police Department. That are referenced in policy eleven point two six, which is the standard operating procedures. And thank you to Mr. Horish. Uh, the chief was cordial in providing that, but what he also did was, he also. Uh, posted them, I believe either Monday or yesterday. He posted those on the town's uh, the police department's website. So in my discussions with the superintendent, I had said, look, forewarned is forearmed. If, if minimally the town of Bolton is willing to put its policies online. And that parents are permitted to access those records at any time. Um, I would, you know, withdraw any further objections I had to the agreement. However, um, there is one caveat to my support of this, and again, I'm only one-eleven, so I understand that, you know, the six votes will carry this day. The, the, the. The, I'm looking, I looked at the policy, one of the policies is up there was, it says revised as of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And, and the reason it was revised is because I think there was um, some numbering issues in the um. In the policy statements, but. What I, we're asked to be, we're asking to approve a document this evening. That is supported by a procedural policy document, which is supported by at least three other. Policy statements of the Bolton Police Department. And as of today, all of those policy statements are now available for public consumption. So parents really need to go and look at four or five documents to understand the full document. But my only issue at this point is that those documents are there today. I have no guarantee they're gonna be there tomorrow. So I, I don't know how other members of this committee would feel, but I, I would suggest two. Um, alternatives to address this issue if, if people have this concern. One is that if we vote to approve this document, we approach through this agreement. That we do so conditioned upon the Bolton Police Department maintaining. The stop and frisk policy, the search and seizure policy, the juvenile operating, operations policy. And the over, overall standard operating procedures policy on their website permanently. Um, again, I have no guarantee, or conversely, conversely, that the town of Bolton and its police department grant leave to this district. So that we can post them on our website, so that we have one comprehensive consolidated agreement. The MOU agreement, the standard operating procedures, the stop and frisk procedure, the threshold inquiry procedures. And the juvenile operating procedures, so parents are forewarned and forearmed and know exactly what the SRO is authorized to do in our, in our adult school district. The other thing too, and I'm actually spoke to Mr. Echol about this, and I think Mr. Echol has concurred with me. I found it odd that the policy statements that were placed on the um, on the website. Were placed not in PDF format, but in Word format. And I don't know if that's just the technical oversight on the part of the town of Bolton, but. It just seemed a little odd that, that those documents we placed up there, because I, when you. To audit access it, you have to click on it, and then it downloads into a Word document, which allows you to edit it. And I don't think editing it's on the webpage, but. Some of the policies are in PDF, some of them are in Word format. It's just a little odd. And so that's all I'm gonna say on that, Madam Chair. I, I would think that we should approve this, but we should approve this either with. An understanding that town of Bolton is going to keep those policies posted permanently. Or that they give us leave to place them on our particular website. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I, I guess when I look at this from. I perhaps don't have quite the appreciation Joe has at his level, but I know that he's a wise person and somebody that I trust in this committee. So. Wha- how, how to deal with this? Um, I agree, it's a little wonky to have Microsoft Word documents up there. I mean, people use Chrome dot, Chromebooks and stuff like that, so I'm sure that's something that can be easily remedied. Uh, and I do think putting it in a PDF format, which is not easily editable. You know, communicates that this is actually not a fluid policy. It's decided at this point. But generally, my feeling uh in business when I was doing contracts is that you're, you're going to incorporate other documents. Um, you incorporate those documents as am, as amendments or addendums to. Or appendices to the agreement that you're signing, so it's clear at that point when everybody's signing. Um, so, you know, if we want to make reference to these documents, I think there should be. A static version that, you know, goes as part of this document, and therefore if those policy changes, the committee, they consider the impact. With the SRO, uh, you know, as part of this SRO, uh, MOU. Um, so that would be my preferred way of dealing with it, which would be to. Take these documents as they're written and then incorporate them as part of the existing MOU that we have. Therefore, you know, if something changes, it comes for the committee, we're made aware of it. Uh, whereas, you know, the, the extreme example, and I'm sure this is no intent to do this, but. You know, it's very common in contracts these days that you put. You make references to documents on a website, say Terms of Service, and then those Terms of Service change. Right? And there's still a reference to that. You're doing this Terms of Service, but they evolve over time, right? There's new versions of it. And, you know, if you're not thinking about the, the main agreement that references to that one, right? So to me, the best way to remedy that is you. Um, you just include the documents that are re- referenced in, in the MOU at the time. And then as those documents change, that the consider, the committee can, can look at that, consider the changes, kind of like we do for all of our policies. So that would be my suggestion.
Amy.
And thank, and thanks to uh, member uh Gleason for delving into these, these details at this level. I think we're lucky to have somebody that. I'm trying to make a snarky comment that will do that.
Yes, his detail orientation is to our advantage, for sure. Um, Amy Cohen, go ahead.
Um, yeah, when I, Joe, I don't know if you were saying that the documents posted in the meeting materials were Word documents? Because um, no.
No, on the website.
On Bolton's website?
Yeah.
Wow, okay, because when I clicked on the meeting materials, they were PDFs, so. Just trying to clarify that, but yes, I would also like to say thank you to Joe for doing uh all this work. To look into these issues.
Go ahead, Mike.
In, in, excuse me, in my communication with Chief Nelson, I guess I just want to thank him. He was very responsive, very amenable to. Some of the uh concerns that uh, uh, Joe passed along to me and I in turn passed on to Chief Nelson. Um. I, given, given his response, I, I don't know that it would be an issue at all. Uh, I don't, I certainly don't want to speak for him, but I don't get the sense that it, that there was any reticence or reluctance to post the document. Uh, you know, the optimistic side of me thinks that it was perhaps oversight. Um, because he was so quick to say, sure, here it is. Uh, it's on the town of Bolton website. It's posted now. Um, so, uh, while I understand and appreciate your concerns, Mr. Gleason. Um, I have a, a sense that it, it would not be a big ask to ask that to be either. Um, permanently placed as a PDF on the website or um posted through the school committee, but it's just, it's just a guess.
Amy Cohen, something else? Okay, um, so Joe, i- am I correct in saying that you are in support of this? So long as it stays kind of connected to those other documents.
And Madam Chair, I think as I, in a communication I had with you last week about this. Uh, I think when it comes down to me and in my discussion with the superintendent. Well, you know, whether I like the terms of the MOU or not, it's really the will of the committee. And I think that having an SRO, and I, I'm not answering your question directly, but I am gonna get to your question. If you just give me a little bit of rope, Madam Chair. Um, I, I do think that having an SRO in our school, at least in the high school. Uh, or in any of our schools, for that matter, is, is something that we should all embrace. Um, but um, at the end of the day, from my perspective. Whether we're dealing with the town of Bolton or we're dealing with some John Doe walking down the street. If we're gonna enter into a contract, a contract is a contract, and it's supposed to be done the right way. And to be perfectly frank, Madam Chair, I don't think it was even the, I don't think the, that the town of Bolton was even aware that the. That the policy references in um. Policy eleven point two six to the stop and frisk uh policy and to the um. Uh, search and seizure policy were actually incorrect uh in their own policy statement. So credit to, to the town of Bolton for diligently um remedying that. But my base concern is that, and basically, I'm just really echoing what Mr. Echo was saying. It's really not that hard. We're gonna enter a contract. It, contract is the contract. It references exhibits A, B, C, and D. Those should be part of the contract, so I'm, all I'm saying is I don't think it's up to me that hard. I, I would, I, I don't, do we have, there's no, is there a motion? There's no motion at this time, correct? I don't think we have a motion yet.
We did not put one on the floor.
Okay, so, I mean. I, I, if, if they're just gonna move to approve, I will probably move to amend to, to provide that, you know, that. Policy Bolton Town, Town of Bolton Policy one point zero five, one point zero nine, one point one five, and eleven point two six. Uh, be consolidated into the MOU, and it be posted on our district website. If for no other reason as to provide notification, and I don't know if anybody will read it. I'm, I'm sure I will, but I'm not sure anybody else will read it. But it, as long as there's notice, people are forewarned, they're forearmed. And so I, I, you know, I mean, we can keep our document and they can have their document posted, but. You know, I, I, there's no guarantee for me as a parent of this district that, you know, that the town of Bolton might decide tomorrow to, well, we're gonna take those down. We're not under any compulsion to keep those up, so we'll take them down and we'll change the website. I just think that notice is the most important thing here, and somehow, some way, and perhaps it just is having. Our website hold that document with the policy. I think you have to, would be appropriate to seek leave from the town of Bolton to do that. But I just think one consolidated document, so the parents can look at this thing, see the document, see the exhibits, and understand what the SRO's authority is, is, is appropriate in this regard.
Kirk, do you think that um, that amended motion would be acceptable? Kirk, do you think that amended motion would be acceptable to create a consolidated version of the MOU that has these addenda added?
It would tough to be, for me to speculate what would be agreed to since it is a memorandum of understanding. What I will say is to echo Mr. Haresha's comments is that, and really all of our police departments, there are partners. And all of these policies and documents are available by any public record request. So they can be accessed by anyone at any time if there was concern about those things. We could frankly just ask for them and put them up on our own accord without even having that as an agreement, but just as working policy of what we do in the district as, hey, just good practice. Let's just make sure, as Mr. Gleason said, our community is forewarned about those policies. So I think there's several ways to do this. If we amend the MOU, that essentially puts us into a process of going back. And then it has to be then go through a process through the police department and the town of Bolton as well. And so we continue to just push the process down the road. I think we can achieve the nobility of those ideas by posting these documents and referring to them. And I will certainly follow up with Chief Nelson as well. I just don't know. I can't say what the town of Bolton and Chief Nelson's position would be on that. That's all.
So I'm just going to let Joe respond, Rich, because this is kind of to his point.
Well, I, with all due respect to the superintendent, Madam Chair, I wholeheartedly disagree. Parents of this district are entitled to notice. And I don't think that what I'm suggesting is any type of amendment to the agreement or any type of change to the agreement. The MOU is supported by Policy 11.26. 11.26 references the juvenile standards operating policy, the stop and frisk policy, and the search and seizure policy. All I'm asking is if those are your policy, and frankly, I don't think we, with due respect, I don't think the deference is the actual word of the day when it comes to the town of Bolton. You're coming to us with a contract. We are paying you, we're paying one of your personnel 70% of their salary. We have every entitlement. As a parent in this district, I have every entitlement to know exactly what authority the town of Bolton's police officers have in our high school. And I shouldn't have to go, and frankly, to be perfectly frank, Mr. Dennis, you know, the response to Mr. Horace's communication was that the chief said, oh, no, those aren't available for public scrutiny at the time of my, or my request through Mr. Horace. I'm sorry, that's inexcusable. Those documents should be available to any member of the public at any time. And if they're going to affect students at our high school, they should be posted for public scrutiny. And I would suggest respectfully that I think the chief agreed to that because he put them up either Monday or Tuesday. So I don't think we need to step, dance around this. I think we need to say, look, if you're going to ask us for approval of the document, the document should be consolidated. And frankly, I would even, I would even go so far as to demand that the chief give us leave to put that on our website. I wouldn't want to say that we have the right to do it because those are policy statements in the Bolton Police Department. But if you're coming to us with a contract and you're expecting us to pay 70% of your employee's salary, I think we have every right and entitlement. I think every parent of this district has every right and entitlement to know what the authority of that. I mean, is there any policy in this district that allows us to say, well, no parent of this district is allowed to know what the superintendent's job description is and the authority of that, of the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent, or other principals? We wouldn't allow that. We wouldn't sit for that. This is, they're giving district employee status. So every parent of this district should have an entitlement to know exactly what the authority is. And I don't think it's that hard of an ask. Take all those policies, amend the SRO and put it, excuse me, the MOU for the SRO and put it on our website.
So Joe, can I ask you just really quickly, would it be sufficient to, for us to post the MOU with all of the associated policies? Would that be sufficient?
Well.
On our website, short of.
Now, that's essentially what I'm asking, right?
Yeah, but, but again, and maybe I'm overthinking it. Those are town of Bolton policy statements. And as a courtesy, I would say, listen, I'm coming to you to ask for this. But, but the, you know, I'm sure that some people here, some people may take the position that if the town of Bolton or the police department says, no, we would prefer that you didn't put those up on your website. There may be those of us who would say would acquiesce to that. From my position, this is a contract negotiation. My position is, oh, well, if our parents aren't entitled to full and unfettered access to that information, then we don't have an agreement.
Kirk, do you think that, Kirk, do you think that we need permission from the chief to post these things, or is this a non-issue?
In terms of the policies of the police department?
Yeah, we can, we could post these right alongside the MOU on our website.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're public documents. So yes, we can. I hear Mr. Gleason's point. He's talking about it from the perspective of the Bolton Police Department posting them, not necessarily the school district. But yes, we can, because they are public records. So we can take any documents that they point to, request them, and post them alongside the policy on our website.
And maybe there could be some sort of annual check by the policy subcommittee to make sure that the Bolton Police Policy hasn't changed at all and to keep what we have up to date, right? Like our policy manual updates automatically, it's housed in one electronic location. So any updates are immediately available to everybody. Whereas the Bolton Police did say in their emails that they don't have an online manual. And so maybe we could do an annual check just to make sure that those supporting policies haven't changed at the root.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, Rich? Did you have a question still?
I was just going to say, in generally, when you're doing contracts, you date, you put a date or version number on something. You say, this is what's linked to this.
Yeah.
So I don't want to like mire this in anything. I'm just thinking of the instrument of how we could accomplish this. And I just think if we put them on their website, that's fine. But then there may be no obligation for them to notify us that that policy has changed. So, you know, to, to the spirit in the letter of what Member Gleason is saying.
Yeah.
If the policy does change, all of a sudden, parents won't be necessarily be notified it. And I can tell you as a member of Stowe and not a voting member of Bolton, you know, there's no representation on how that policy is, and the district would be subject to that. So, you know, I'd like to just see that policy be frozen. And then if it changes, it comes before the committee, we reconsider it.
Kirk, do you have, okay, Kirk, do you, because guys, we're at 9:08. I just want to move a little bit quicker through this. So Kirk, can you clarify?
I think Rich brings up a good point that even if we pulled the document from Bolton and posted it on our website, we would have to closely monitor that if there were any change in policy. So for instance, our mask policies are all automatically updated on our website as we make changes to that. So they're provided for. But if somebody is copying our policies and showing them in another place, it wouldn't update there. So it just.
So do you have a solution for that?
No, I mean, I, I think you would, as a committee, you need to listen to one of your members in terms of Mr. Gleason as well. And I'm going to act at the will of the committee and do what the committee wants here. Because I would again, come back to the point of, I don't hear this discussion as an indictment on the SRO. Mr. Gleason was very clear about the fact that SROs have a place in schools that, you know, good partnerships, and we want that. But if it's the will of the committee to take that guidance, to have those assurances, we're going to, we'll act and follow it.
Okay, so let's hear from Amy and then Mike.
I think what I would like to propose is an amendment to the motion. Right now, the motion reads.
We haven't, we haven't moved yet, but you're just telling us what you think it should say?
Oh, I don't know. It's in the chat. Do we not actually do it yet?
We didn't yet. So what would you say?
So I'd move to authorize the superintendent to sign this or a SRO MOU between the district and the town of Bolton, Massachusetts, with the understanding that policies referenced in the agreement would be provided, let's see, Bolton policies referenced in the agreement would be provided to the school committee whenever they are updated and made available for posting on our website. I don't know if that's too complicated, but what I'm trying to say is that we should make the motion include the town of Bolton providing us these policies. And whenever the policies are updated, they should be obligated to let us know. Is there a way to say that more succinctly?
No, I've got it. But here's, here's the only thing that I would say is that that means they're changing the operating procedures mid-contract. And so, I mean, they could change it to something wild. And so I think what maybe Rich or maybe Kirk was saying is that whatever we, whatever operating procedures are in place at the signing of the contract, they have to remain intact until the end of the contract. Does that make sense? Mike, you're next.
Right. So I would take this a step further and move to postpone the vote. I think we're missing an essential partner in this conversation. I think Mr. Gleason brings up some compelling points. I'm more than happy to take the lead. I've already reached out to Chief Nelson. I'm happy to work with both Mr. Gleason and the superintendent. And, you know, anyone else who's interested to make this so that everyone has an understanding as to what we're voting on and that we're all sort of in agreement of the terms. And I can have this sort of finalized by our next meeting, if it's the will of the committee.
All right. So without objection, I would ask that we put this on our next agenda. And we can perhaps have more information from the chief.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you for doing, offering to do that, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. God, Rich. Are you muted? You're muted.
Just kidding.
Oh, my God.
God, I could make you laugh. Yeah, I totally, I concur. I think that's a good idea. Let's not rush into this. I, in my opinion, when you, when you sign a contract, you're just confirming everything that you've agreed to, right? You don't want to, you don't want to guess what's going to happen, right? That's what a contract is. Like, it's confirming everything you're doing, and then you don't want to have to go there for that. So for me, the simplest thing, just simply say the policies as of this date, and you put a copy at the end of the document. But anyway, well, I look forward to hearing what the dealmaker, Mr. Haresh, can work out.
Yeah. Joe, did you have a hand up?
I did mention, I don't want to belabor this, which I'm doing a very good job of belaboring this. You know, just at a base level, and I understand it's a memorandum of understanding. It's not a contract. It's a memorandum of understanding. And I understand also that, you know, we have leave to withdraw from the agreement at any time. I'm not suggesting you think about doing that because I think an SRO was important to our high school and to our all schools. But at the end of the day, if you look at the first line of the MOU, it says it's an agreement. And the base element of any agreement is a meeting of the minds. So it doesn't make any sense on any level that the, you know, the town of Bolton would, it possibly could happen. But, you know, if the town of Bolton changes policies without notice to us, then we really don't have an agreement with them. So I echo what Mr. Echol was saying. I do think it should be consolidated as part of the MOU. And that every parent, I'm less concerned about consolidations and more so than I am about notice. Every parent needs to have notice of this. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Okay, guys, we're going to move on to the last matter. And that is subcommittee reports. So let's start with, and if you have no report, that's fine too, but just share out budget and warrant. Rich or Mike or Brett want to jump in?
I'm the secretary, so I'll report out for us. There's only two executive offices, so. Officers, rather. So last Monday, we put together a joint budget and warrant committee meeting with the Audit Advisory Committee. And the intent behind this was just to close the knowledge gap, right? Something that I think we've done a really good job of doing this year between the superintendent and then inviting all these other stakeholders to better understand the budget process. And I think, and not surprisingly, a lot of the people in the Audit Advisory Committee are the people that come to the budget warrant meeting anyway. And so it was a good meeting. We started out by talking about the budget process that we went through, a lot of what's already been covered in this meeting. So that was good. A lot of positive feedback from that in terms of how the, or how the superintendent and his staff approached it. We reviewed the March April report, as we already discussed. We talked quite a bit about OPEB, the other pension and employment benefits, which is really healthcare for retirees. And the impact that that may have on the budget, both in terms of mechanisms to control the cost, but also to, you know, that it may actually be decreasing as a liability depending on, you know, the baby boomers retiring. So I think it was a real ripe discussion to move on from there. In terms of the Audit Advisory Committee, which was handled at the same time, you know, it was also a way for Pat Maroni to really only have to attend one meeting since she's a key participant in both of those committees. And to give an update to both committees on where are the budget. She was expecting a draft report last week. It didn't come. It's really late. Normally, we get all this in terms of March or April. So that's just the way things are going. And then the last thing relevant to the budget warrant and the audit advisory is with the turnover at the Finance Director with Ms. Maroni leaving, I think in October, we're going to be going out and looking for a, or potentially switching auditors to get some fresh eyes. Not a lot of choices out there for regional school districts that do auditing. But, so that's kind of the state of the state. I was looking through, just a quick aside, I was looking through our responsibilities in the regional agreement. And the Audit Advisory Committee is, I don't know if I want to say required, but it's a bullet item to have a public meeting to state on the financial health of the district. Or not, I don't know what the word is, but that the controls are adequate and so forth. So I'm going to want to connect with Mr. Downing on that so we can make sure that we live up to the spirit in the letter of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Communication.
No report.
Thank you. School Building Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The School Building Committee met last evening. We had a presentation from our designer on space summer and preliminary building concepts. Our architect is getting closer to determining whether or not it's the type of project we're going to have. It's either going to be a, you know, a new build or a renovation and build out of the current high school. One of the things that came out of the presentation last evening was some very interesting information regarding the high school. And I think that while I can't, while the committee is still waiting to hear what the final recommendation is on whether it's going to be a new build or renovation, the one thing that did come out of this meeting was that whatever we decide on, it's going to be a somewhat more efficient and more compact effort. So that's the one thing that I can basically take away from the architect's report last evening. The next forum on that particular topic is going to be June 14th. The superintendent is efforting the possibility of having this next forum be a bit of a hybrid forum. People can come in person and also ask their questions and attend online. Lastly, our June 21st meeting is going to be somewhat important. We had a light agenda yesterday, but I think our 21st of June meeting is going to be somewhat heavier. The OPM is going to be asking, the OPM and the architect is going to be asking us for a vote of approval on the preliminary design program plan for submission to the MSBA. This is not the actual design of the building, but it is the first step in that process. So that is essentially it, Madam Chairman. We hope to see you at the 14th and 20th. Thank you.
Joe, can I just ask a procedural question? When they want our, the school building committee's approval, is it just the school building committee or does it have to be the district committee?
It was my, well, that's funny you should bring that up because when you were talking about the calendar, I noticed that we had a meeting scheduled for the 22nd. And I had anticipated that was for our committee to meet to vote on the recommendation of the building committee. Apparently it is not, but I think that that would probably be appropriate. Meeting on the 22nd, that would be an appropriate time for us to ratify the recommendation of the building committee.
If need be, maybe you could just double check to see if they need the district committee. Kirk, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Attorney Gleason, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Attorney Gleason, we had it on the school committee calendar for Skanska to come do a 15-minute. for Skanska to come do a 15-minute update at the next meeting on June 1st. Would that be overly redundant? Should we just wait until that other moment or go ahead and, should I go ahead and proceed in planning with Skanska to do that 15-minute overview with the committee on June 1st? I know the chair sets the agenda, but I just would like to get some, some guidance on how to steer Ms. Williams and the team.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You'll have to beg my ignorance, uh, have to forgive my ignorance, uh, Superintendent. I'm not sure I understand the nature of your question as I know we have, I know this, I know there was going to be an update from the, uh, from OPM and the, and the design team to the school committee. Uh, it's noted on the calendar, but, um, are we?
Yeah. And it was basically going to be similar, very similar to the content that the school committee saw, skill building committee saw this week at the presentation last night. So, given that we would have to bring them back to do that, should we go ahead with the, the update for next week? And I guess that's more of a question for the chair, but just want to make sure we're doing our things. They're due for an update. We put it on the calendar as June 1st anyhow. And it would, uh, essentially be the content of the presentation we saw last night.
Yeah. Oh, 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 you're talking about the guy to the presentations, the space summary. Absolutely. On the first would be great. Yeah. But, um, but seeing you bring that up and I did notice on the calendar, it actually has it for the week of June 6th on the, uh, on the calendar. So, um, I was kind of wondering about that when I was looking at the, uh, the school building calendar. So we have it, we have it as of, um, June's on the, um, on the, on the calendar of our meeting dates, it has week of June 6th for
A planet. You're talking about the planning calendar, Joe?
No.
No, 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 the school. They're off sync in that way, Joe.
Right. Yeah. So, uh, whoever, I, I guess that's something for Mr. Masterson. Uh, it, it, there's a, there's a calendar on the, the building committee website that lists all of our future dates for meetings. And there was a note, and they also has a form on the fora on there as well as a week of June 6th school committee update. So that's probably just a typo and call it that.
Yeah. All right. So
That's a, that's something for Amy Cohen. So Amy, that's on our web, the school building website. So maybe
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now and I can make that change. So.
Madam Chair, proceed with Ms. Williams on, uh, preparing that presentation for June 1st then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Alita. Is everything okay? I saw your hand, Alita.
Yeah, it's, um, Mary Ann is the one that sent us that, that document to post in a PDF. So I couldn't, but I did call her and let her know that she had the wrong date, just so they know what data show up. But I can call her and ask for a revised. It is on, it is on, um, I don't know if it got transferred over to your website or if it's still on. I think it's right on the beginning of our website.
It's in both places, Alita. So.
So I can get a new document from Mary Ann and then send it over to you.
Awesome. You are the great safety net, Alita. Thank you so much. Um, continuing on with our um, subcommittee reports, personnel. Uh, we wrapped it up tonight with Kirk's evaluation. So no report otherwise, policy.
Policy met last week. Um, we went over, Mr. Gleason was nice enough to join us and we went over policy D and we'll have our um, final versions for the, uh, committee to see, um, in June. So I, I believe it was at the, I can't remember now if it's the 15th or June 1st.
Yeah, I can't remember. The first.
The first. So we will present those then. Uh, we also started going over the, uh, changes to the harassment policy and we will present those as well. Um, let me just see. And then we also did our, our goals review, which we already covered. Uh, and then at some point Kirk will come back to the minimum wage policy that you would want to, to discuss at some point. So that will be for a future time. That's it.
Awesome. Thanks, Karen. Um, I already heard from audit advisory. So maybe Sharon, Dear J.
So, um, Dear J has, um, created a memo that, uh, is giving a little bit more um, information around their request for the calendar change. And I had actually thought that it was going to be on tonight's agenda, but it didn't make it. So it, I think, did that just get bumped to next time?
Yes, totally a mistake, um, and a miscommunication. So it will be on the next agenda.
Okay. Um, so that is something that they are hoping um, we'll, we'll get to soon. And then they are working on, um, wrapping up the year with, um, consolidating into a document or a folder. All of the work that they have done in all of the various different, uh, subgroups and areas that they've been working on um, to make sure that the continuing work on diversity, um, or DEIB, uh, will be able to be picked up and carried forward. Going into the next school year and they are looking at the possibility of planning a summer workshop as well. And that's all.
Amazing. That sounds great. Um, and, uh, finally to CPAC. Brett, any update?
Yeah, CPAC had elections. Um, they've got a, a new board and they still have a few open spots. So anybody that's interested, they'd love to have you. Dana Green is the, and Pam Duggan are the new co-chairs. And you can find their contact info on the website. And they'll have rolling elections throughout the year. If people are interested in, in becoming a part of the board. So I would recommend you reach out to them and, and if, if you're interested.
Awesome. Thanks, Brett. So that'll do it for our subcommittee reports, guys. We just want to look really quickly now at the planning calendar. So I'm going to share it with you. Um, that's the agenda. Here's the planning calendar. So as you can see, we are supposed to have two meetings um, this next month, but um, in June, we're going to add a third meeting on June 22nd. And, um, Kirk, can you just, uh, remind the committee why that additional meeting is necessary for the strategic plan?
Yeah. So strategic planning will be wrapping up on June 9th, of which the draft uh, plan will be coming to you on June 15th. And then for, in order for us to have the authority to start building our goals and doing our summer work and, and doing workshop and prep, prepping for school committee workshop, we need to officially vote and adopt the plan, or at least the content of the plan, uh, to do that. So we just would need to meet the next week in order to, to vote that.
Excellent. And Joe will let us know if we need to do anything for the school building committee for the preferred design option. Um, so guys, this is what we have on our agenda. Obviously we are wrapping up. This is kind of our last opportunity to you know, dot all our i's, cross all of our t's. So raise your hand now if you think something is essential and cannot wait. Um, and Mike, I'll lean on you to tell me who's raising a hand or you guys can just jump in.
We're handless.
Excellent. I like handless. So I'm going to stop sharing. And say that it is now sadly for some, maybe not for all, time to adjourn. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, Rich, nice job. Would anybody like to second that?
Second.
Yeah, Amy Cohen's got it. All right, let's take the roll. Amy Vessels, you get to go first.
Is there a discussion?
No.
I want to go back to the, uh, the S, the MOU.
Uh, Amy Vessels, you get to go first.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
You're adjourned.